The Esoteric Order of Role Players present, The Great Pendragon Campaign by Greg Stafford, with David Larkins as the game master.
You're just not making it angry.
Okay, so let's have Kale talk for a few seconds so David can do noise cancellation at the start of the editing.
Alright. Okay, here we go. So, we are gathered here today to play some Pendragon. And you all have made your characters. I'm not sure if you've all named your characters.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Hello, Garrus.
Do we need a random Arthurian name generator?
I've got one. I've got one pulled up on my phone.
Can I be Sir Copperbum?
Sir Copperbum. I don't think you're a drone, but.
It would be a good pick from if you don't like it, we can.
I don't think you're a drone, which would also be Copperbum.
Tollader, yes.
Alright, you need one, Kale?
Tollader.
Tollader.
I'll just say it.
Sir Kale. Sir Kaelus.
Kaelus again. Kale's back in the mix.
Kaelus.
Tollader. Tollader.
But with Kale this time.
The tramp in Return of Kaelus.
Ah, I miss Kaelus. Sir Kaelus.
Someone named themselves Kinrain just for, just for lols. It's not me. If you name yourself Kinrain, you won't lose.
Well, that's an interesting test.
It's an interesting theory, yes.
Would it be weird if I just called myself Sir Arthur? Would that be rude?
Not really.
No, I'm sure there's plenty of Sir.
Other Arthurs.
Other Arthurs around that might eventually become knighted.
There was like King Arthur. I'm like, yes.
So, the year is 547. And you've all been gathered together in the town of Bessinger. Summoned there by heralds with news that Sir Don Walt, Lord of Bessinger, is dying. He's an old knight. He fought the Saxons at the Battle of Baden Hill 25 years ago.
Damn, it's been that long?
It has been that long.
Shit.
And his wounds that he sustained there are finally catching up with him. So.
Well, it's been a good run.
He lived in good years at 36.
He didn't go to Niton Tony, visit the miraculous, you know.
Sir Aaron?
Sir Aaron?
Yeah, I guess not.
Yeah.
He's like, it's just all.
Maybe Sir Aaron couldn't even help him.
Yeah, possibly.
Maybe that's the only reason he survived as long.
Yeah.
Oh, that could be too.
Sir Aaron is my only surviving character.
Oh, really?
Yes, he is an NPC.
That's sad.
Yeah. He has, he has a wound that should be fatal that didn't kill him. So he's, he's become a pilgrimage site unto himself. People come to touch his beating heart through his, yeah, he has a little door built into his chest and they open it up and his heart's right there.
Yeah.
Seems like he would get an infection really quickly.
It seems that way. It seems that way.
You think he would, but he has not needed a leeching in, in ever since.
But it's been prophesied that if he ever leaves his little hut, he will die.
Yeah.
So.
Chapel, chapel.
His chapel hut.
His chapel hut.
Yeah.
They built a chapel around his hut?
Basically, yeah.
Just about, yeah.
So, um, yeah, so when Lord Bessinger has passed away, his estate, which is a small town with a very prosperous flour mill, uh, will pass on to his heir.
Oh, who's his heir?
One of us.
One of us. Seven sons and then there's the first son. We must take him hunting.
Yes. I knew that would come back.
You know what's funny? Why would I go hunting if y'all gave suggestion to go hunting? I'd turn to a hunt. No, you can, I'll, I'll eat when you bring back something.
That's a good question. Did any of us put points into hunting?
I don't think so.
No, we did not.
Cause I didn't.
Then why the hell would I go hunting? Just because it's for sport.
Cause we all drink a lot and we're like, you know, it'd be great.
Hunting boars?
I don't know if I can be seen drunking, drinking with.
Drunking?
Drunking, getting drunk with you guys.
No, it's not drinking. It's hunting boars. And besides, I have 14 hit points and I want to go. What are you, what are you, some kind of, some kind of maiden?
Oh.
Chalange accepted. No.
Yes, it is notable. It is notable, well, hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it is, it is notable that Dave has managed to roll the character with 14 hit points.
Yeah, 14!
And Susan, Susan has rolled up a character with 3d6 damage. So we have some real powerhouses here.
However, it should be noted, I do have a 20 in app.
Yeah.
That's true.
You don't need anything else when you're.
My goal is to keep you alive. That'd be my goal. Just, just out of spite.
You will fail.
Just out of spite.
Just out of spite. I'm key. That's why I did medical too, to keep you alive. Like if his squire screws up, I'm like, none of my watch.
Just saying right now, you will fail.
Many have tried.
We will see. We will see. I'll be the first.
Alright. So, uh, yeah, so anyway, you're all, you're all in residence at Sir Don Walt's manor house. It's a fine stone manor with a lead tile roof and, you know, a, a homely hall, large marble fireplace. You all will be sleeping in the hall, of course, on the floor. As Sir Don Walt slowly expires in his, uh, in his chambers.
As we push like vultures upon his deathbed?
Exactly. Also present is, um, his daughter, Lady Melanie.
Of course there would be one.
Of course.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
So if she were to be cast as someone, who would she be?
Um, she would be someone, um, who really wouldn't have much of a career in Hollywood because she's not very good looking.
Oh, well, never mind then.
But she has huge tracts of land. So, potentially, if, if she is his heir, if she turns out to be his heir.
Oh, she's, she's not Fat Amy from Pitch Perfect.
Right. So, um, but yeah, no, she's, she's fairly vivacious. Um, you know, twinkling eyes and, and, uh, you know, a bit flirty perhaps, especially with Susan, your character's name.
Sir Claudour.
Sir Claudour, okay.
Yes, Dave.
So Sir Caligaris and Sir Claudour, the only two that kind of look similar.
High five, bro.
Sir Calidaris.
That's right, cause.
And then Kale, your character's name is Sir.
Kale.
Kale.
Sir Kaelus.
Kaelus, alright.
I'm very creative, I know.
Very good, very good. And Randy?
I am Sir Tollader.
You're not a sir yet.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
You are Tollader.
I'm just Tollader.
Tollader of the Squire.
You lose honor for impersonating eyes.
Dare you, sir.
I'm trying to call you Toll. It's a Toll.
Or boy.
Or boy. Squire.
I say there.
Okay.
Do you want a brush, brush?
That is an excellent question.
Uh, no, he's just, uh, who were you sworn to? Who was your leash lord?
To what? Leash lord?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Cas.
Oh, the Castellana.
Yeah, the Castellana, Tentagel Castle.
He has given you leave to attend this, uh, attend this meeting, so he is not present.
But he wants to know us up.
Also present besides the young lady Melanie is Abbott Borogard, the well-respected head of the local monastery. Uh, obviously Lord Bessinger's various household knights. And, uh, your, yourselves being, uh, his closest, uh, relations through marriage and blood.
Okie dokie.
So, um, anything you guys want to do while you're waiting for Lord Bessinger to die?
Oh, man, let's go hunting.
Does he have, does he have a huntsman?
You could, uh, you could engage in some gaming perhaps, like a game of chess or a bit of falconry, or you could challenge each other to a joust perhaps, to help you learn the system a little better.
I will tell stories.
Does he have a jousting list?
Uh, yes, he does, actually.
Then yes, I will propose a joust that I will abstain from.
Fabulous.
That I will abstain from. Gentlemen, a joust and I will watch. I'll be, I'll be the GM of this joust.
I will make sure you are doing it right.
Right, exactly.
Right, pressing at once.
You got me, uh, some lances, right?
Oh, I did, totally.
It's almost like you already know the system and don't need the practice.
It's right. It's like I'm into it.
So, uh, so for, uh, this is Bessinger, right?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna tell stories to everyone that's there of his great past.
Ooh, nice.
While he's still alive, I guess, but you know.
Right.
How great a man he is.
Within, within his experience.
He knows how great a man I think he is.
He's gonna just will you in the will. Go ahead and roll your aura eight. You can impassion that with a love of family passion.
Okay, so what do I roll? D20?
D20.
And add my aura eight?
You're gonna go to your passion first.
So you were trying to roll equal to or under your passion?
Yes.
For, for love, family.
For love, family, okay. Uh, 18 over 13.
Okay, alright. So you have failed to inspire yourself. This will cause you to be disheartened when you attempt your aura eight skill. So had you succeeded, you would have gotten a plus 10 to your skill. Uh, however, you failed, so you're actually gonna have a minus 5 to your aura eight for the purposes of this role only.
Okay, minus 5 to the, and that's again a D20, uh, plus my aura eight.
Now against your aura.
Against your aura.
I see, which is minus 5, so that would be 7.
7 or less.
8.
So it's, it's, it would have been, it would have been a good story, but your heart just wasn't in it.
Yes.
And so people just kind of, like, people started wandering off about halfway through, you know, like, and, you know, and then like.
They could see that I don't actually know them.
Right, and then like you could hear Lord Bessinger snoring up in his chamber, you know.
You put him into a very restful sleep.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
That was my intent all along.
Alright, so meanwhile, Sir Claudour and Sir Kaelus are going to meet out on the jousting field.
Okay.
Indeed, and I will play mu, I will accompany them with music.
That's right. It's, well, it's the herald, yeah, you can, uh,
Indeed.
You can blow the, uh, the revelry.
Ah, there, we are out of socket.
Alright, tut, tut.
I, I filled my glass expecting to die, so.
And we also have whiskey.
Oh, my God, yes.
Technically bourbon.
Yeah, we, we hit up the liquor store last night.
You're like, we need liquor to get through this con.
Yep.
Alright, so, um, very good. So of course, uh, Sir Bessinger's, um, armory is stocked with jousting lances, so.
Fabulous, I'll take some.
Make use of that. And, uh, and his jousting list really is just kind of a, you know, neatly mown strip of lawn.
Of course.
But, uh, good enough for your purposes.
Indeed.
Alright, so.
Would you like to impassion?
Oh, yes. I think I'll have to passion that with my honor.
Alright, you don't want to make a fool of yourself.
That's right. Kale, would you like to impassion?
In order to use a passion, you have to justify why you're using it, so.
Well, I have a 19 in my family. That'd probably be the best one to do, right?
If you're trying to impress, uh, Bessinger.
Well, I have, I'm thinking of my family being the first born, first, firstborn son. I have uphold. That's a high standard. If I don't, then I don't want to start them, so.
Alright, so Susan, did you make your passion?
Oh, yeah.
Did you crit your passion?
Uh, no, I got 13 under 19.
Okay, so you both succeeded.
So you both will, uh, add plus 10 to your skill for the purposes of this role only.
Okay.
Alright, so what does that bring your skills up to?
25.
25?
Each 25. Okay, so what you're gonna do is you're going to roll your D20s and add 5 to the final result. If they, if they equal or exceed 20, once you add the fives, then you crit.
Okay.
The way to look at it is, rolling exactly your skill is always a critical. So if you had an 18 in your skill and you rolled an 18, that's a critical. Once your skill hits 20, you can't fail, right? And if you rolled a 20, it would be a critical. So for every point above that, it increases the odds of you critically, right? So you're adding 5 to whatever you roll, both to make your role better, right? Cause higher is always better. And to increase your chances of getting a critical.
So you'll crit on a 15 or better.
Yeah, and you'll add 5 to it regardless.
Yeah.
Because what you're trying to do is beat each other.
Right.
So Kale, you rolled a 14 plus 5 as a 19.
And Susan?
So I got a 16 plus 5, which would be 21.
Susan crits.
So a crit beats a regular success.
Cool.
Okay, and in that case, you're gonna go ahead and you're gonna roll your horse damage. Normally in a joust with blunted lances, you would roll your damage and it wouldn't count for purposes of wounding, but since you're critical, it means you hit them extra hard.
Whoopsie!
Which means it's gonna be regular damage.
Okay, so horse damage, horse damage, you say?
Yes, so if you have an illusion charger.
76.
Indeed.
Sorry, Kale.
I didn't know I was jousting you.
The momentum of both the horses coming together add together, so it'd be 8 plus 76?
No, but that's why it gets the horse damage is to represent that extra momentum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
23.
Okay, so you have a partial plate, correct? So that's 14. You succeeded on your, uh, roll, which means you get your shield bonus as well, so that's 20 points of armor. And you rolled how much?
23.
23, so that's a difference of 3 points. It's gonna come off of your hit points.
So you'll take 3 points of damage.
Okay.
And what's your size? Oh, no, no, um, keep the, keep your total right there.
Just right on side.
No, no, uh, write your to, current hit points right there, under current hit points.
And then, yeah, the other thing to look at is your size.
20. What about my size? 16?
16, so if the total amount of damage done is, uh, greater than your size, then there's a chance you're gonna get knocked off your horse.
So make a horsemanship roll?
Mm-hmm.
Which is. 18.
I'm off my horse.
You're off your horse. Alright, when you fall off a horse, you take an additional D6 of damage. You can roll that yourself. 1 point, so. Take a point of damage, not too bad. You manage to roll with the fall. And, uh, Sir Claudour wins the joust.
So it's important to note here that for healing purposes, Kaelus, Sir Kaelus, I should say, he took 2 wounds. One was from the actual impact of the lance, the second was from falling off of your horse. That means that your squire is able to perform 2 different first aid rolls on you because you have 2 wounds. Now, in extended tournaments, you want to pay attention to how many wounds you take, as well as how much damage you take, because how many wounds you take is how many first aid rolls can be applied on to your body.
Cool.
Yeah.
So if you want to have your squire, uh, make some first aid rolls, his first aid is equal to his age, which is 14, so he needs to roll 14 or less.
So that's 1 success.
And then the other one.
15. So you got, so you get 1 first aid roll.
Yep, so it's a.
Can I heal myself?
No, well, you can, but it's like a minus 5 or minus 10.
I might as well try.
Well, you can only, you can also.
So you've already, you've already tried, so just for future reference, yeah.
So I don't get 3 kills out of it, I only get 2 even with.
You only get 1 wound. You only get 1.
1 try per wound.
Yeah.
Regardless of whoever's.
Uh, so you don't heal 1 hit point, you heal a D3 hit point.
What D3? So just.
1.
And I have still 1 wound, that will, what?
It's basically no longer applicable.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so you will heal over the course with your healing rate of, uh, matter, matter of weeks. What's your healing rate? Looks like it's 3.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what's your maximum hit points? Alright, so in 1 week, you'll be at full health.
Weird, okay.
Yeah, healing is very slow, so.
Winning is.
Unless you have a prescription of Scriptus Longus, apparently.
Yeah.
All the cool people have one.
Some of us just got money.
So where does our magic play in this? Like you said, little bit, like.
None available to players.
Well, except for certain things like, uh, remarkable medicines or, you know, occasional things will come along.
Occasionally you get screwed over by magic and I was, King Arthur will kill you.
Yeah.
What?
Hey, hey, no.
I, I said occasionally.
Occasionally, that happened once, once. Get murdered by King Arthur.
I don't know, there was that other guy, that poor NPC, that showed up.
Oh, yeah.
With the gift from her.
Yeah.
So, you know, twice.
Well, sure. Yeah, usually magic hurts you rather than helps you, actually. Alright, so, uh, so that's jousting and that's basically the, the core mechanic as well, so. Uh, but yes, so you spend the while away the day jousting and, uh, aura eating and so forth. And, um, during that night, that evening, when the, um, squires and pages of the household are bringing out, uh, some ale and, uh, bread and cold meat for dinner, uh, there was a great cry from up in the, up in the room where Sir, uh, Don Walt has been slowly slipping away. And, uh, sure enough, Lady Melanie comes rushing down the stairs in tears, crying that her father has passed away at long last.
Oh.
So, Sir Bessinger is dead?
So, uh, his, his will then.
So who is his one true heir?
Uh, yes, his will will be attended to
So, uh.
After his burial in the morning.
Can I try to comfort Lady Melanie?
Certainly. How would you like to, how would you like to comfort her?
I hear children are the greatest comforter.
No, they're the greatest love of all.
No, I, uh, I have a chase of 16. I don't think that's gonna be happening. Um, I have no idea. He's very much not my kind of usual.
Could sing her a song?
Yeah.
No, I'm horrible at that.
I could sing.
You get, you get a bonus from your app.
That's true.
That's true.
Um.
Could dance with her a little bit?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm, well, I'm not horrible at dancing.
You also get a bonus.
That seems inappropriate in this situation. Like, I'll just like.
Come on, just dance away the tears.
Yeah.
Just give her a little like, oh, they're there.
I'll sing a song.
It's tragic and horrible, but God's will.
I'll sing a song.
God's will.
I use the passion, uh, just, uh, love for my family too, that I love to sing. My mom taught me a song when I was a little boy and it calmed me when I was going through some hard times, so.
Something like that.
Oh, man.
So I'm gonna try to sing.
Good passion grubber.
Yeah.
Alright, so roll that love of family.
19.
19.
I tied it and it's 19.
You tied?
So that's a critical. So in that case, your, your passion automatically increases by 1 point, so you now have a passion of 20.
Which means you can never fail that passion.
You're also, you're also gonna check the passion, the little checkbox next to the, um.
I love my family.
Yeah, you do.
Damn.
And, uh, you get a plus 20 to your singing.
Oh.
For the purposes of this role. And so your singing is.
12.
12, so it's a 32.
Plus your dice. This is one hell of a song.
So you crit.
You crit the song, okay.
So check your singing.
Check singing. Why am I checking the singing?
Uh, because you critted your singing.
That represents a chance of increasing it at the end of the year.
Like Calico.
So.
Oh, Susan, you critted your lance, right?
Yes.
Did you check it?
Did you check it?
I did not. I should.
I sung a song to help calm her. Hopefully it worked.
Uh, yes, it did, and then some. Yes, absolutely. In fact, you're gonna get some glory for that.
Nice.
Glory is basically your experience.
Where does that go?
He'll, he'll give it to you at the end of the session.
Oh, and I will, oh, fuck it.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, you, you managed to calm her by singing this, um, basically lullaby. You know, she's just kind of hiccuping and dabbing her eyes and smiling at you. And, um, very much, very much, um, impressed.
Ooh, your app 16. She's liking what she sees.
She is liking what she sees, absolutely. So the next morning, uh, Abbott Borogard of the local monastery officiates the funeral as, uh, Sir Don Walt is laid to rest. And then you all proceed back into the hall where on a, uh, great oak table, uh, Don Walt's strongbox is produced. Lady Melanie supplies the key. The strongbox is opened and Abbott Borogard unfurls, or breaks the seal rather, on the last, uh, will and testament of Sir Don Walt. Begins to read it and looks up at you all.
It's gonna be me.
Sir Don Walt has made me the heir of his lands.
Can anyone read Latin?
Yes, yes, we both can.
Can we?
Make a read Latin roll as you peek over his shoulder.
Wait, we can read Latin?
You have a default of 4 if you're Roman.
Oh, shit.
And your aura eight defaults to 10. I don't know if you had that.
Uh, yes, I, oh, no, I don't.
Um.
Cause it's not law. Alright, so, um.
4, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Can I, can I passion this with my honor?
If you, ooh, make a trusting suspicious roll.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, fantastic.
So roll trusting first.
Okay. I got 2 out of 16.
So you make your trust.
You're, you're trusting him too much to impassion this.
Yeah, so we both trust.
But you just wanted to kind of double check. You know, you're like, really? That seems unusual to me.
Yeah, I'm so curious. The, uh, the abbess.
Abbott Borogard.
Yeah.
I have 16 trusting.
You're like, checks out, it checks out.
Yeah, it seems legit.
I got 10.
A man of, uh.
Man of cloth?
Yeah, a man of cloth would never.
Why would an abbot lie?
16 spiritual, I believe these guys.
He'd go to hell if he did.
With my soul.
That's not worth anything.
But you can always, you can always make that roll anyway, double check.
Tote's going to.
Okay, go for it.
Gotta practice.
Go read Latin?
Yeah, read Latin. Yeah, read Latin.
Yeah, might as well.
I got a five.
I fumbled.
So, so you can't, you can't read it well enough at all.
Yeah.
At all. And, uh, and.
Twenty.
Oh, I, dude, I rolled twenties left and right in this game.
That's, that's the one motivation he has.
Maybe a little too hard on this, keep you alive.
And for Clodore, basically all you catch sight of is the, you know, Borogardus. You know, like you see his name in Latin there.
Legit.
Yeah.
Lady Melanie.
I can't read anything.
Lady Melanie, however, is kind of looking at him like she's completely confused. She's like, no. No, I saw my father write that out. He, he promised his lands to me. This is a fraud.
My lady, can you read Latin?
I cannot, but he, when he was, when he had the clerk come in to write it, the clerk from the monastery. He told me that the lands would go to me.
I smell perfidy. Perfidy. But I trust the bishop, cause I can't read Latin and I'm trusting, so I can't, uh, yeah.
My lady, I'm sure you just misunderstood.
How can I misunderstand my father promising me his lands? And I might point out, Sir Kaelis, that whoever marries me will, will acquire those lands as well.
I love my horse.
So at this.
None in a twenty.
So I.
I look at her.
I could pet her right now. That'd be okay.
So do they have a steward that deals with everything in the?
Yeah, but say, don't they have?
Manor, or is she doing a lot of that?
Uh, she was basically taking care of it, yeah.
Is there, she, is there anyone, I'll take your side. Is there anyone else you trust that actually reads Latin well?
I suppose the.
I saw his name written on it.
Local bishop would have. How trusting is a local bishop?
He's a bishop.
Why would you, why would you doubt the bishop?
I don't doubt it. I'm just saying.
You are a Christian, sir. How could you doubt the bishop?
Oh, yeah, I know.
You are a Christian, not a pagan, unlike most of your country folk.
I'm singing this.
She says, uh, well, I suppose my father was friendly with the, uh, the old scholar Per Twans at Oxford. He would, uh, he would know.
How far is Oxford from here?
About a week's journey.
I can regain health, I mean.
I know, you started to think of it like, how many weeks?
So let's, uh, let us take this, uh, this will, this last will and testament to, uh, to Oxford town. And, um, and yes, let us consult with this.
Wouldn't the dude like be kind of offended that we're doing this?
And we will prove the abbess, uh.
We will prove his loyalty to our late lord.
The, the abbess looks, uh, the abbess looks completely nonplussed. He's just like, fine. It's, it says it right here, but if you want, uh, if you wanna make sure of it, then, uh, you know, I know Per Twans of old. And I'm sure he will back me up on this.
My good sir, my good Lord abbess, sir, we are, we will clear your name in this, in this.
What's your trusting anyway?
Oh, it's a fourteen.
Okay, and then, and then, uh, uh, Clodore's is notable, right?
Yeah, sixteen.
I just wanna say.
So how does Tollador feel about all this?
Um, I think he has to roll, cause he's ten, ten on trusting.
Yeah, sure.
Me too, actually I am.
Go ahead and, and you always roll the left hand trait first, so you're gonna roll trusting first.
And I'm not gonna do any of my passions for this, right?
Nah, just.
Yeah, you, you rolled over ten, which means you fail at trusting, which means now you.
So now you're gonna roll suspicious.
You wanna roll equal to or under to succeed at something.
And I failed both.
You make suspicious.
Alright, so, so Kaelis is downright suspicious. Uh, Tollador, you're kind of.
You can go either way.
Go either way, exactly.
And of course, we are on a righteous mission to prove our good abbess in, in the race.
As a man of God.
Of course. How could a man of God lie to the people?
Indeed, it's not possible.
No, not at all. He is, he is the wellspring of the eternal and divine. There is no way there could be deceitfulness or perfidy within his body. He's purified, he's purified by the blood of the lamb.
Well said, well said.
Well said, sir, well said.
I am terrified beyond belief right now. I'm not, that's out of game right now. What the hell am I getting myself into?
So on that note, you all head out.
Can my horse be called Rocky?
Why not?
Sweet. I had a mountain in the game, my mount, it was a lizard, it was called Rocky.
I travel with my cat. Until you find a manor to put your fantastic cat in.
Your wonderful cat.
What manor? You don't have, you're like a shack, maybe.
Hey, if he marries, uh, if he marries the lady, then he gets the manor.
Go for it, man.
That's right.
Even though she's fucking.
Would she marry a squire?
She's not that homely.
She's not that homely.
It won't take very much to get him knighted. I mean, we could pool our money and knight him.
That's true.
How much does it cost to knight?
It's thirty-five libra.
Yeah, we.
I'm so short.
We should go to Vegas and just knight him.
Just do it twenty-four hour.
We're gonna get you knighted.
We gotta get, we gotta get, we gotta go.
Elvis impersonator does.
I've got twenty libra, you've got twenty X libra.
I got twenty-one.
Yeah, it's forty. We could tote and knight him.
Uh, yeah, except that nowadays, uh, it's so, uh, posified that you actually need the High King to knight you.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Arthur's gotta knight you.
But Pentecost tournament is coming up, so.
Oh, hooray.
We'll find that out.
So we're going to check this dude to check this letter that we have, and that's pretty much it.
The will, it's an official document.
Yeah, it's a last will and testament signed by.
Who's the one who made that? The dude that read it?
No, the, the clerk of the church wrote it, because most people are illiterate.
I think we should take the clerk with us.
The clerk of the monastery, who works for the.
Where's the clerk that wrote it?
The clerk with us.
Alright, let's take the clerk with us.
I'm confused.
He can, he can, uh.
He can verify.
He can bear witness that this is all, uh, all the up and up.
But he wrote it, though.
That's right, he can swear to committing down the duke's, the, the sir's.
What does the clerk say he wrote?
The clerk probably says that he wrote what he wrote.
But who, but the bishop is the one that said that it's in his name.
Right, he read it, yes.
Yes.
He's read it. So the bishop and clerk are two different people, correct?
Yes. And the clerk wrote down.
The clerk works for the bishop. Then what the heck?
Out of character.
It's very possible. So why are we doing a wild goose chase?
It is not a wild goose chase.
Do you like Lady Melanie or not?
I'm confused.
Cause she's saying. Complete bullshit.
That's what I'm saying, but the clerk wrote anyway, so obviously he's gonna be like, oh yeah, I totally wrote it like this. The king's gonna be like.
I know.
Right, but she's saying it's not what her father said.
So she is.
When he, when he dictated the will.
So she's saying that the clerk wrote down something contrary to what the last wishes of Sir.
So how do we argue this? And that's what I'm trying to get at. Like he could, clerk could have wrote anything he wanted, the king didn't read it.
Well, if, uh, if we are keeping up with our Arthurian current events, matters of civil, uh, issue may be, uh, contested. Through trial at arms.
Uh, from a combat.
So does she need to fight them? She needs a champion.
She needs a champion.
Yes, Lady Melanie needs to go.
Get out your nunchucks.
So, Sir Kaelis, I will champion the church. You can champion the lady.
I feel terrible.
Okay, sir, uh.
Well, so why are we even going to prove this letter? Then why, why don't we just do trial by combat and get this done over with?
Alright, so you could, you could skip, you could eliminate the middleman, absolutely.
Alright, Randy, I challenge you to trial in combat.
Wait, what?
How did I come into this picture? A squire?
Yes.
Is that dishonorable to challenge a squire? No, you can't do that. You gotta challenge another.
Sir Kaelis, I challenge you to trial in combat. You obviously distrust this.
Sure, you're representing for Abbott Borogard?
I trust him.
Yeah.
Also, I have a sixteen in spiritual.
Let's go for it.
Sure.
Did you wanna interject?
Yeah, no, I think, I think. I, I, I think. How would I say this without insulting you horribly?
God will strengthen my arm.
Oh, you're trying to get yourself killed.
And the one guy that's, his mission is, in this game is just to not get him killed, and I even have to kill him. That's so messed up.
Even when I'm not.
This game does, does tend to produce messed ups in there.
Calaveras?
Maybe I'll roll bad.
Sir Calogaris.
Calogaris.
So we're doing a trial by combat, so.
Calogaris, take me away. Um, so if you wanna do trial by combat, that's fine. So you challenged.
I do.
So it's, it's your terms.
Chalange. As the, as the.
Are you French?
As the king of kings bled upon the ground, so shall the unjust bleed upon the ground. If he is proven wrong, so I call to first blood.
First blood, okay. On foot or mounted?
Mounted.
Okay, lances or swords?
Let us go with lances.
Okay. Unredated, I take it.
Yes, the.
Sharpie, sharpie.
The stain upon the good abbess is a festering boil that must be lanced.
I see what you did there.
Okay, so you guys are gonna face off. Uh, you can definitely impassion with honor.
I don't know if I wanna passion.
I, I actually can't.
It's always a choice.
I can impassion with honor.
At seven, right?
Yep.
Well, I could passion with my love for my family and say, I'll, but.
Crazy first.
Yeah, that's automatic though, right?
Uh, well, it's, it's an automatic success, yes. There's no way you could fail it.
Alright, yeah, I will do my love for my family. I, I'd already lost one joust today. I need to justify it, make sure that my family doesn't hear about this, especially a bigger deal. That was just sportsmanship. So this has definitely gotta be worth it.
Impassioning with honor. By my honor, the abbess is a righteous man.
I hope you critted.
That'd be hilarious.
With a seven, seven.
So my hosp- or my, uh, my honor goes down to six now, cause I failed.
You failed, yeah.
I hope I just don't kill him.
And my, uh, lance, uh, well, my lance starts out at, uh, no, javelin starts out at half spear, so my spear is equal to two D six.
Oh, you don't have a spear default.
Okay, so my spear is five. Well, I mean, my spear is ten, but currently it is a five.
And your lance is?
Oh, yes, two D six. A five.
Okay, so your lance is actually zero.
My lance is now at a zero because of, uh, because of what I've done, so.
Right. Now, Kael, if you wanted to, you could generate a passion. If you felt like your character was attracted to Lady Melanie, you could generate what's called an amour passion, which is like you're kind of championing her. Right? So, um, yeah, just wanted to point that out as an option.
So what's that mean, though?
It means that you, you have feelings for her, and so you're like, I'm doing this in the name of Lady Melanie, and so it creates a new passion that you could.
Oh, that would be a blow here. I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm more of like, I'm more just, I, I just hate seeing a lady cry. That's my big thing. And, and this is definitely something, and she's already been upset.
You have to generate.
It's more of not attractedness, it's more of just, I just don't like being, I don't like when my mom, she meant a lot to me and, and I see any kind of female. And distress, that definitely just discouraged me.
Okay, perfect.
So.
Great.
Nice.
Alright, so did you roll your passion on any of her yet?
I have a twenty, so.
Yeah, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna roll to see if you crit or not.
Yeah, so if you roll a twenty, that's a crit.
Roll a one.
Alright, so you succeed. I fail with my lance.
Of course, so Kael, you get a plus ten tier spear expertise.
Which is fifteen, so, alright.
Alright, it is regular success. You're using, uh, sharp lances, so you're just gonna roll your horse damage.
Which is eight D six.
Eight D six with a despir.
God. How many dice is that?
It's five, I need, I need just, can I, can I, can I hold my character back a little bit, knowing that I'm gonna probably hurt him?
You can actually voluntarily, yeah.
I wanna do that.
You know, withhold the blow. Yes, so you're still gonna roll your damage, but it's not gonna count as fatal damage.
Yes, I'll do that.
Foiled again.
Alright, go for it.
A lot of ones in there.
Six, two. However, I fall off my horse hard enough.
You're not gonna die for falling off your horse.
He might.
He might, of all the people who might. How did you ever survive a squire training?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, alright, what's your size?
Uh, my size is ten, so it's auto knockdown.
Auto knockdown.
So, uh, D six damage.
Six damage for the fall.
So five points of damage.
Five points of damage.
But I held back the blow.
You did hold back the blow, so it's not gonna, um, it doesn't, um, what would we say, penetrate your armor. It's not gonna cause first blood, but you are off the horse.
That's right, so.
So it's a bit of a legal gray area.
Right, so no first blood. I hit the ground, so I draw my weapon, which is the two-handed flail. And I say, challenge me on foot. Continue this until first blood.
Has to be like as big as you are.
Well, it is two-handed.
Just hold on, I have to even challenge that. After being knocked off a horse.
It's, it's assumed that, that, yeah, you are. I don't think there's a minimum strength rating.
If you are an honorable knight, you will face me until the challenge is met.
Yeah, I've already won the challenge, though.
You have not. The challenge is to first blood. I bleed not.
Yeah, you are, you just took damage.
It's a lot of bruising.
Well, it's just bruising.
They have not broken. That's right.
Technically bruises are succutaneous bleeding.
Ah, oh my god. Face me.
Start swinging it around wildly. I'm totally thinking the cable, god, come back, so I smite thee.
Sir Calogaris is Sir Jim Carrey.
Certainly Jim, that will kill us both.
Alright, so, uh, yeah, it's time to face me on foot with your, uh, with your weapon of choice.
I'll just use my shield. She's gonna bash your face in. Shield, I'll use shield sword. Eventually you'll bleed.
It's bruises, not blood. You had to strike you with your weapon to cause you to bleed.
Okay, actually, I was, I was just checking this. When you withhold a blow, it's not the same as using a blunted weapon. A withheld blow causes half damage, but it's still real damage. So what do we have?
We had, oh, so it's eleven damage, eleven damage, and then.
Crap.
Yeah.
And you failed your roll.
Oh, he got you. You have ten points of armor.
I got one point of damage. Damn it.
My bitch.
I bleed. And we won by trial by combat.
Unbelievable.
I only needed to do one damage, that was perfect.
So she gets the lands.
Oh my god.
So did the abbess have to agree to this too?
He did, yes.
He did, okay, yes.
And so, uh, so Lady.
One damage.
One dumb habit.
Why does it be like, yeah?
This is the best champion I could possibly have.
He still did a roll check, doesn't even look at the guy.
He just like heard it out of the corner, he's like, yeah, whatever.
I heard he has a two-handed flail, it sounds good.
Why did you challenge him to the chowst, you idiot?
Exactly, he was assuming you did the, uh, flail.
That's wonderful. Alright, so eight hit points.
Great, eight hit points, excellent.
That is, that is more than half. By a little bit. But I have invested.
Yes, you have. Uh, but speaking of the abbess, he is, um, he is not very happy with this, uh, outcome, obviously.
Alright.
And, um, says that he will be appealing this to the High King's judgment.
But in the meantime, I think the, uh, the decision reverts to the daughter, right?
Of course.
Trial at arms.
So yes, he's like, you will be hearing from my lawyers.
I'll, uh, and then I'll kneel before the lady and say, you're, you've tried, yeah. I cannot talk, god. My lady, your armor has been kept, especially for your deceased father.
She's, uh, she's fairly hopping up and down on her, on her little booty feet. And, uh, and she says, I'm, I'm sure that the local lord will consent to our marriage now.
Maybe, my lady, if you would. I'll like go over there and like nudge you a little bit, like. If you honor me, lady, I would prefer to really speak to my family, because, um, they mean real dear. And, uh, it would not be proper, especially, I made a promise to my mother that before she even met you. And anyone to be in that, it would be highly, highly recommended, just her approval would make, make me feel even more comfortable.
So she looks a tad disappointed, but she also understands.
I'm Obama's boy, that's why it's just automatically.
Yeah, so she's like, I will, I will await your, your mother's approval then. Uh, and, um, I will, I will keep this manor, um, ready for your arrival.
Sir, Sir Kaelis, let's ride to your family. Tell them the good news.
Oh, look a bullseye. Where'd that gal on the top of my shirt? I had to say that, I figured you guys would like that.
Beautiful.
Yes, and so, and so we fade out at the, uh, Bessinger Manor. Um, time goes by, time passes. In Pendragon, we, we take the long view of things. And it's all very seasonal. Yes, you're back to full health.
You gained your one. I'm so glad, I told you, you're not gonna die on my watch.
Not on my watch, even if you challenged me.
The best part is, I can still see his character getting this two-handed flail, like, I'm still ready, and then there's like, sir, you got something right here coming out. Oh, that's just tears. Oh, it's blood, god dang it. Oh, that's just tears, oh, it's blood, oh dang it.
Well, yeah, your, your damage was eleven, so on odd damage, you shatter your lance, so it probably was just like a lance fragment.
That's what I'm thinking of my head, like, it was just, like a little splinter.
Ha, but look again. Nope, nope, I just popped his it earlier, that's all it is, that's all it is.
Just a blemish. Tis but a blemish.
Alright, so, um, so yes, um, time passes and in due course, the annual holiday of Pentecost rolls around. Which means that it's time for everyone to gather at the royal tournament held in Camelot.
How long's the time?
Time has passed.
How, how much time has passed?
Has he been able to go and get his mother's approval?
Of course, so.
So let's, uh, let's escort him to his mother and escort him back, so that he can enjoy his nuptials.
If you're so inclined.
Me?
Yes.
I would've.
I think he has three very insistent friends.
Yeah.
Yes.
Friends?
We wanna see you safely married, brother.
At land.
Could you not roll higher on her attractiveness, that probably would help, but.
Yes, well, that's, that's wrong.
What kind of land is it?
Uh, it is, uh, it is a manor and an adjacent town with a prosperous flower mill.
Yeah, seriously dude.
You can build that up.
Yeah, I'll go, I'm cool with that.
And you know.
I didn't think about the land part, I was thinking about really.
And you don't have to sleep.
But as long as, can you at least roll to see my mom's approval, do you not? That would help me feel more comfortable knowing.
Sure, sure, um.
You are a firstborn son.
Yeah, that's a kinda big deal, it is a big deal, that's why I meant.
Go ahead.
She wants to save you for someone more higher, highborn. That's on.
Yeah, we gotta find out, alright.
Make a roll, your choice of courtesy or orate, uh, to present the whole argument to her.
Courtesy or orate?
Yep.
Probably courtesy, even though it's a five.
Okay.
Can I do passionate about?
Definitely love family in this case.
Yeah, so passion, I, I hit my passion.
Alright, so your courtesy's now fifteen.
Fifteen. That was perfect.
That was perfect.
God, what the hell? Perfect. Oh my, I'm, I'm going hunting every day.
So in the course of presenting this argument to your mother, you managed to just completely undersell, uh, what a good match it would be and, you know, she says, oh no, I have an inn with the local, uh, with the local earl and, uh, we can get you, we can do much better for you, basically.
We can do, but she can't do better?
She, she, she believes she can.
Oh, nice. Well, I take this as an opportunity. So, okay, so, I, I didn't, I'm confused, so is it, am I not married, marry, that's what I'm saying.
You're not, she's not gonna let you marry.
Oh, really? Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that means. Oh, y'all were really, what the hell?
I thought he was trying to get into it so not to marry him.
Yeah. Either way.
No, he, he finally decided he wanted to go for it.
Oh.
And so he wanted to just get his mother's approval.
Yeah, that was a big thing. I had to.
She's not gonna.
I had to get my mom's approval, that was a big thing.
Yeah.
Even better.
So it actually worked in my favor.
Ultimately.
Yeah.
So.
I'm swooping in.
Yeah.
Totally swooping in.
Swoop it.
Can I do that, can I build him up during that time period?
Totally, yeah.
Because he, if anything, I do know he's a squire, and I would really think that it'd be beneficial to him and his personality that, he is a man of honor and I've worked with him in combat, but if anything, you know.
Pretty honest.
Well, it's. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I've taught him, he's taught me a lot, that actually has encouraged me to make it more passionate of the opposite sex.
I think the way to cinch this.
If anything, it could be work.
We need to cinch this by getting him knighted at the Pentecost Tournament.
Indeed.
So we need to pool our money.
I like the way you think.
And get him knighted, that way he can come back and marry the lady.
Yeah, exactly, there we go, we got a plan.
Fantastic.
What was your name again? You're just, you're just excited to have some place for your cat, that's, that's. This isn't for me. What is the name of your cat, please be something epic.
It's Alina.
Oh, no, give me something else. The cat is Sir Tigre.
Sir Tigre?
Let me call you. He is a knight. He had a little ceremony, a little twigs, there's a bunch of mice there.
He's got his own little coat of arms.
We do, we do have a former, uh, knight, oh, I don't wanna spoil it for Susan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
We have a knight that married an animal.
Yeah.
Oh, exciting.
Yes.
That's, oh man.
I wasn't even there for that session.
You missed out, man.
That's fantastic.
Alright, so, so yes, uh, it is mid-May, it is Pentecost, it is, uh, the high season. And so, much like Gen Con, uh, knights from all over the lands, stream towards this one geographic location and fill all the halls and all the, um, boarding, uh, houses and dormitory rooms, uh, that they may.
Did we get in good in the housing lottery?
Yeah.
Probably not, no.
I think we're lucky if we have tents.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, 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 no.
No, my lady would, you know, my lady friend would hook us up.
Melanie?
Yeah.
She, if you're not gonna marry her, she's not your lady friend.
How can I ask my friend? No. I got her, I helped her with inheritance, I didn't, I didn't say, I didn't go to my mother, I went to my mother and she's the one.
It's your mom's fault.
Exactly, so.
You guys could have a secret romance.
That's right, you could have a more.
She's just a really good friend.
That's what true romance is.
She's a really good friend and. You're letting me swoop in and then you're gonna have. You're a good friend too, though. This is, I'm a very honorable man, I'm all about my friendship and backing up, but my family comes first, that's what I'm saying.
About the rules of love, the new rules of love, like secret love is real love.
Secret love is best love.
So regardless, my lady would definitely, I would, hey, I'm, I'm saying, I want to love in one, a well place for my friends, especially, for my main man here, he has to be able, because this is all about him and trying to get him knighted. If anything, we would want to make sure we're as presentable as possible, because it's not just our honor, it's his honor. I wear my boiled leather. And that's what I would, I plead that to her, and hopefully she would help us in any kinda investment into that passion.
Alright.
Do you roll for that?
I think that's good enough.
Alright, cool.
That's pretty solid right there.
Solid, absolutely.
I'm just pulling that out of my ass.
Hey, that's a solid pulling out of your ass.
I'm trying to hook up Randy's character, people are like, no, we gotta get Skr- Skr Kell over.
Uh, yeah.
I told you, I only have one of gold, Dave can't die.
Well, you're doing an amazing job of that so far, Kay.
Well, let's see how you do at the Pentecost Tournament.
You're not allowed to play.
You're not my mother.
He's trying to bind you. Oh, I'm totally tying him up. You're not my mother. Dave, can I ask your favorite plugin this, uh?
Oh.
Oh, I got it, got it.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, so you all, uh, you all gathered at Camelot, yeah, like basically, at this point.
Thanks, sir.
At this point, Camelot is, uh, enough of a well-developed city that it does have like rooming halls for the poorer knights, you know, you guys can just. You know, you're, you're just in this like massive hall with all these cots laid out, you know, you're just sharing it with like eighty other people.
I thought we got hooked up with good tents.
Well, no, what I'm saying is you're in the, you're in the.
Oh, this is just the casual area.
Yeah, you're in the hall, you don't even need tents, but, but you are hooked up with equipment for.
Oh, nice, cool, tournament equipment.
Lances.
How much is the other?
That's part of the expense of knighting, is you get your own armor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I couldn't buy him armor either if I wanted to?
Uh, you could if you wanted to, but there's like, sort of like protocols, you know, for a squire to be wearing good armor, you know, like. Uh, however, Camelot is, especially the Pentecost Tournament, is such a locus of so many knights, uh, all interacting that you all are going to basically be, um, um, I don't know, how would you phrase it, getting a workout, I guess, uh, just by being there?
Yeah.
So what you're gonna do is you're gonna roll a D twenty against all of your chivalrous traits, those are the ones marked with an asterisk. And if you make the roll, you're gonna check it, if you fail the roll, you're gonna make a roll against the opposite trait, and if you make that, you're gonna check it.
So.
Okay, so energetic.
So what's that mean?
So, roll against.
I just did.
Okay, did you succeed?
That's an automatic success on the opposite.
Succeeded your energetic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which one?
Energetic, everyone with the asterisk next to it.
A little lazier. Oh, so that one, so I check it?
Yeah, if you make it, you check it.
I'm not doing well.
If you fail it, you roll against the opposing trait. So in that, in that situation, you would, instead of checking your generous, you would roll against your selfish. And if you make that, you check your selfish.
That sucks.
And then you move on to your next chivalrous trait.
But I tied my seven, so that may even go up.
If you roll exactly, then, then that's a success.
I don't want my selfish to go up. What about a one?
One's a success.
Just a regular success.
I made, I made two of them.
I'm a little more cruel, though.
I made four out of five.
Ah.
That merciful.
If you make all five, you get a private dinner with the king.
Yeah.
That would've been so awesome, I would've been irresistible.
I get a dinner with king.
No, you, you, you did your selfish, so.
Oh, wait, which one?
You, you failed your generous and made your selfish, which means that you do not get a.
Which one's, this one?
Well, it's an auto success, right, if you fail.
I have one, two, three, I got five out of them.
You didn't get your generous, though, you failed your generous.
I got five out of six.
The other one, right?
Your rule to see.
Yeah, but she needs five out of five.
Oh, sorry, six out of six.
That's what he said, he said five, that's what threw me off, dude.
No, okay, so I'm confused.
Oh, that's right.
If you fail the one, you get an auto check on the other one, am I imagining that?
If you, if you roll a natural twenty, then it's.
I'm gonna die soon. You gotta let me go.
Yeah, so if you draw the one, you roll to see if you succeed at the other. Oh, you had to make it six out of six, I was all excited, I got five out of six.
Alright, so I got four out of six, so definitely did.
Religious traits, so there's five religious traits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dang it.
I got two on both sides.
I wanted to talk to King Arthur too.
Okay, and in the meantime, um, just being around all these knights at Camelot, you also get a chance to practice your courtly skills, so.
Fab.
If you can remember what those are.
I'm going to practice my tourney.
Okay.
Which is a.
So your courtly skills are like compose, courtesy, dancing, falconry, flirting, gaming, heraldry, intrigue, orate, play instrument, uh, read Latin, recognize, romance.
So anything in other, pretty much, except gaming.
Almost anything, gaming's in there, gaming's in there.
I mean, I said hunting.
Anything you could see doing at court.
So like law? Would cover courtesy.
Law, because it includes intrigue, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Actually, I'm gonna go ahead, can I gossip and try to find who probably, is there ladies here or no?
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything that I would stand, would definitely, okay, I might be passionate about this. Obviously, my mother's been toyed with me being, having, uh, someone of a partnership, but now she, she really, really is kinda pushing me to definitely go for, I'm gonna go for like the definitely top girl there, like something that.
Go for a top.
Yeah. He's going for whatever.
Alright, so that'll come up during the Pentecost feast.
So, okay, so that's not yet.
Do we note it?
But do I need to gossip for that or anything, or?
You may, you may. Uh, in the meantime, choose one of your courtly skills, roll against it.
Done.
Yep.
I made my law for intrigue.
Yeah, you made your law, okay, so what is your skill in that?
Twenty.
Twenty, alright, so you're gonna get some glory for that.
Damn, son.
I know, right?
I failed mine.
It's important shit, man.
And then actually you get, uh, oh yeah, no, it's just one.
Intrigue is the.
Intrigue is one of your, uh, courtly skills, so you roll against that.
No, that's why, I rolled a three, was that the one where you, what is intrigue?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one I wanted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, did you make your intrigue?
Yeah, three against a thirteen.
Thirteen, alright, good, good, you're laying the groundwork there.
Trying to.
Mm-hmm, okay, and Randy, you failed yours.
Yes.
Okay, and Sir, how did Sir Cloudor go?
If I remember correctly.
That was me, I'm Cloudor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Caligaris.
Caligaris, yes, if I remember correctly, tourney is a courtly skill.
Yes, it is.
And I made that one, and it's a fifteen.
Thank you. Okay, great.
The tourney.
What's that?
What are you trying to get for tourney lore?
No, I'm just, uh, I'm just spouting information about.
You're talking about tournaments, you know, you're kinda like.
I, I was just trying to figure out what your character was trying to gather as information.
It's like two people at Gen Con cock, talking about Warhammer.
Yeah, basically, I'm talking about my character at Gen.
This is something you're doing, but you don't know what information you may gather from it.
Hey, this is, this is my level twenty fighter.
Oh, okay.
And this is what he's done for the past calendar year, I hope you don't try to expixiate yourself while I describe this to you.
Uh, I will say that you find out that the, uh, prize for this tournament is a set of chainmail barding, along with beautiful tack and accoutrement.
Says, uh, for your horse, it's armor for your horse.
Oh, oh, I love my horse, though.
That's right.
If we're working, we'll use some nicer tack.
Le Fleur.
Yes.
I always really, modesty, my name is, my dog, I have a kind of horse named Rusty, I should've been funnier.
There's a character that's named Le Fleur from something, I don't remember what it is.
Le Fleur.
It's like a police captain or something, I don't remember.
Alright, so, uh, you're also gonna be involuntarily tested on various, uh, skills. So divide your app by ten, that is the number of times you will roll.
Oh, twice, eh?
Twice, I think the rest of you are just gonna be once.
No, Kale will roll twice, cause he's, uh, one point six.
So what's that mean?
So you roll twice on a D twenty until they, the result each time.
So we're rolling three times?
No, twice, you roll twice on the D twenty and tell him the result each time.
Yep.
Can you keep track of everyone, or?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll go one at a time.
Okay, I suppose so.
Yeah.
Six.
Six, uh, so someone challenges you to a chess match, roll gaming.
Gaming starts at a three.
Alright.
And I fail.
Okay, no penalty for failure, alright, Kale?
Seven.
Seven, and do another one.
One.
Okay, um, so you're a challenge to a poetry contest.
Ooh.
So you're gonna roll compose.
Nothing with singing, that sucks.
Well, I don't actually have compose, I just.
Compose?
Uh-huh.
It's a zero.
Alright, so you have to bow out, and, um, also, uh, in the run-up to the tournament, as you're all gathering, uh, a lot of, uh, knights are hanging their shields out and, um, and banners from the windows of, uh, the royal castle. So, uh, yeah, so a lot of people are standing around trying to recognize the various coats of arms, so go ahead and roll your heraldry.
Me?
Yeah.
Me? Hey, at least you got a herald.
Two thirteen. Nice, alright, so check your heraldry and you get some glory as you successfully point out a few of, a few of the more obscure coats of arms.
Well, actually.
Yeah, actually, I think you'll find that you're wrong.
Alright.
Papa Smurf says, I'm awesome, Papa Smurf says.
Those are the arms of Sir Lammerek.
Alright, and Talador.
Uh, two.
Okay, you're just challenged in courtesy in general, uh, just trying to stay out of everyone's way and be a good esquire. So go ahead and roll your courtesy.
God, failed.
You didn't fumble, so at least.
It's true, I did not fumble.
Alright, and for Kladur.
Got a five and a thirteen.
Alright, well, many of the ladies are flirting with you, of course. And many also wanna hear your opinions on romance.
Oh, well, they're.
So, go ahead and roll flirting and romance.
Oh, I, hold on, I added that wrong, there's my pencil.
Bad maths.
Bad maths, I wanna ignore that free four I get in it, alright, so I'm rolling my.
Flirting.
My flirting?
Yes, indeed.
Ooh, I'm not great at flirting.
Three.
It's okay, that makes you more appealing.
Eighteen out of three, woo.
You look like a pig. That's your flirting.
My romance is much better.
That's about right.
Well, it didn't fumble, so, more just like, you know, kinda.
You look like a really pretty horse.
And, uh, romance.
Romance, fantastic, that's what I'm better at. Fourteen out of fourteen?
Oh, really?
I assume I'm gonna check that.
You are, and you get a lot of glory for that one. You are, and you get a lot of glory for that one.
I thought, see, you know what, you just gotta talk, talk, you don't wanna.
You're very good at theory, not so great at practice. That's unfortunate.
I have a chaste of sixteen.
You're like, I love these new romance rules.
Yes, I do.
You've gotten Gwenniver's rules memorized.
I have them tattooed on my arm.
Exactly, alright, very good.
Is that my thirteen? Yes, or was that my thirteen?
That was, that was your thirteen.
Okay, so it was a five.
The five was fourteen.
Thirteen.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're all set.
It's all one thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Fantastic.
See what I did there?
Yes.
So very good, alright, so uh in due course, uh it is time for the feast.
Yes.
Feast.
Feast. I didn't bring my feast cards with me, but I do have my feast table, which is the same thing, just in non-card formats. So um.
Everyone will roll your app.
Yeah, so you all gathered together in one of the sub-feasting halls of the uh king's uh castle. Not being particularly high ranked in any way, shape or form.
You don't wanna fumble your app, but failing is okay.
Failing is okay.
So just a, where's the app?
Roll your app.
Roll your app.
Which app?
Uh, that's your app, sixteen is your app.
Nineteen out of twenty.
Uh, that is a six out of twelve.
Your app's twenty?
Yeah.
Damn.
I'm incredibly attractive.
Super hot, and Randy, what'd you roll?
Sixteen over nine.
So Randy, you have the choice of flirting, uh indulging or gossiping.
Oh, well, I will gossip.
Okay, so roll your intrigue.
That's why I put my intrigue up.
Ah, succeeded.
Yeah.
Three.
So go ahead and check it and um, yeah, so. You hear some very hot gossip indeed, actually. Apparently, in the king's main feasting hall, even as we speak, there is a lady present. One Lady Elaine of Carbonak, who has come with her twelve-year-old son, whom she claims is none other than Lancelot's own son.
You mean bastard, right?
Yes. Yes, this is quite scandalous, because uh Lancelot has been the queen's.
Listen to this, I'm like.
Lancelot has been the queen's champion for many years now and has pledged his chaste amour for her and her alone.
Oh my.
So the fact that he may have produced a son with someone else.
Twelve years ago, though.
A violation of the rules of romance.
Is this before all of that?
No, she's, she's definitely.
Definitely within that window.
Yeah. They've been around for a while now.
He was the queen's champion from year one, so.
More is pretty old, you think they could do a fraternity test on this or?
Um, well, you know, you could look at him and see how he looks.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not good teeth.
All British people have great teeth, what are you talking about?
I mean Merlin's not around, so we can't really do anything in that.
Yeah, exactly.
Ah, yes, alright, so. That's the gossip, alright, in the meantime.
Wow, that's impressive.
Yeah, good gossip, Randy.
That's right, oh, yeah.
Nice.
That's tasty.
Feast table.
Feast, feast, feast.
Man, I wonder, I'm still gonna get ten flies. Ten flies basically means nothing happens to you, you've wasted a feast card, go screw your life. Go screw.
It's cool stuff that happens to you.
Normally, I have, normally I have a deck of cards to hand out, but we have to go off the table.
Okay, yeah. So if you're, if you're happy, then something interesting will happen to you. If you're really happy, then you'll get a special feast card that's red. If you're like me, you'll get ten flies and nothing will happen to you and you'll have wasted an entire turn of trying to roll an app when your app is fucking seven.
You got a twelve.
It's not bitter or anything.
You haven't met Sir Dig.
Yes.
It's true.
So um even though you're all in a sub-hall, uh it's still uh quite uh large and accommodating. Um, and uh there's, you know, kind of a, you're, you're all sitting at trestle tables, set up a little U formation, there's a large area in the middle. Currently, there are some uh acrobats of dusky skin uh getting into weird contortions and sort of, you know. Uh entertaining you all with their odd cape rings. Um, meanwhile, um, the uh food is being brought out, uh at one point you spot the notorious Sir Kay. The king's seneschal is played by Gordon Ramsay, uh yelling at a, at a page who uh.
House kitchen?
Hold on, I'll bring it up, don't worry.
I know what he looks like, I'm just shocked.
I'm shocked and appalled, uh yelling at a page who uh spilled two drops of wine from a pitcher. Um, but uh yeah, anyway, in the meantime, you are all engaging in various and sundry activities, so.
Am I getting back to my gossiping earlier or are we doing that?
Right, so you made your app roll, which means that you get your choice, you can either have a feast event happen. Or you can, like you said, kinda look for somebody to, to sort of cruise.
Of course, I'm definitely gonna be looking.
Alright, very good, but let's do uh.
Looking for a mammy, I mean, a mama, I mean, a woman.
You're looking for a wife.
Yes, a wife to replace your mother.
Yeah, exactly. Apparently, she smells like my mother, I may have cried.
He's perfect, he's perfect for Sir Kay, I never imagined him as Sir Kay, but it's perfect.
There he is. Oh god, alright, so. Alright, so in the meantime, let's, let's do, let's go around the table, so we'll start with Sir Calgaris first.
Alright, uh do I need to roll something?
Uh, yes, you do, let me pull that up.
D one hundred?
What did you roll on your app roll? Sorry, I forgot to ask.
I rolled a six out of twelve.
Okay, thank you, now you're gonna go ahead and roll a D twenty.
Okay, I'm glad we're keeping with the D twenty, not bringing out the hundred.
I know.
I know you've got a lot of cards, David.
I know, I do.
That's a nine.
That's a nine.
Okay, you get uh involved in a drinking.
Contest.
Con contest, yes.
With my four con!
Yes!
Gotta drink.
First, you have to roll your indulgent to join.
Fuck yeah, um indulgence is, oh, just a six. Come on, get it, 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 damn, I fell by one.
Ah, so you sit it out.
Damn, I know my limits, regrettably.
No, I don't invite.
I'm cool.
I think they just notice how frail I am after they offer, and just, sorry, man.
Never mind.
We were talking to the knight next to you.
Going, yes.
The one with a five con.
Okay, so um, yes, sir, let's see, Sir Kaelus.
Yeah, what's up?
Okay, so uh in the course of keeping an eye out for something, um, go ahead and give me an intrigue roll.
One.
Made it, nice.
Yep.
Alright, so the most eligible lady in this hall is Lady Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
The queen's handmaiden.
Who's she cast as?
I can't remember and I can't check, cause we don't have wireless. But if she's the queen's handmaiden.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Oh, that's true, actually, bring your phone up. If she's the queen's handmaiden, then she definitely is high status, you know, rich, you know, very much so. So your choice, you can make a courtesy roll or a flirting roll.
I suck at both. Can I do passionate about?
Since you're uh.
This is for love.
Love of family or honor?
Uh, definitely family, which is seven, I mean, so plus ten, then I'm gonna do a courtesy.
Okay.
Cause I, flirting is. Three.
It's embarrassing.
Right? Nine, make it.
Yeah.
And that was flirting, you said?
Yeah, uh no, that was courtesy.
Courtesy, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so uh so you strike up a conversation with her, you know, um, yeah, this is ridiculous, I gotta pull it up here.
Wait, how do you spell Elizabeth?
Uh, E L Y Z A B E L.
Ah, there it is. Oh, she is uh, uh, yeah.
She's who?
She's good looking.
Oh, mm-hmm, yes, very good.
I'm pretty sure this is Lady.
Anne Hathaway?
Anne Hathaway?
Oh, Lady Anne Hathaway, of course, of course, yes.
I'm cool with that.
Very one.
Well played.
Well played, sir.
Yeah, let's see, one that looks like my horse or. One that looks like my, yeah, yeah.
Actually, yeah, F thirteen is kind of.
She might have the consumption.
Whatever. Then he could have carried all her stuff.
She's sweated in empty glory, I don't know how much stuff she has.
She's the queen's handmaiden.
For god's sake.
For god's sake.
So what else do you need else? Uh, basically, you just, you spend, you spend the hour uh chatting her up, basically.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Making inroads.
It's okay, she knows your name now.
With, with somebody of this high status, you're actually gonna have to get like probably the queen's permission to marry her.
Can I make a attempt to also saint her?
Uh, next round.
Okay, oh, this is running out of time.
Is the queen there?
The queen is not here.
Oh.
She's in the royal hall.
You're totally gonna make it full of yourself, aren't you?
No, I, I wanted everyone to roll for their amour, Gwenniver.
Of course.
Uh, the first time you see the queen, you have to roll lustful plus ten to uh see if you generate.
See how you feel about her.
That's fine, it's still a pretty good chance of failing for me.
What does she look like?
Uh, Nicole Kidman.
Nicole Kidman, yeah.
Can't fail that.
King Arthur is Christian Bale.
Okay.
I like it.
Don't piss him off.
Don't piss him off, that's right.
So uh.
He will yell.
Don't trash his scene.
Arthur will always be very young, uh, what's his name?
Do you know I'm gonna die, Mike?
The guy who played him in the um.
Randy, you already go for your.
Film version of the Camelot musical. What's his name, I can't think of it.
I hope you do.
Uh, jeez, I'm totally blanking on it.
Right?
What are you special, what'd you choose as your specialty? Folklore.
Doing your thing.
Alright, okay, so Tolador, oh yeah, you, you missed it, so you got your intrigue, you got your gossip, okay, so. Actually, Sir Clodur, it's your turn.
Fabulous, so I got, I got nineteen out of twenty on my app roll.
Thank you, so roll a D twenty, please.
Nineteen.
Oh, nice.
How would you do that like for medieval, like you'd have to do like hand swords?
You'd have to, no, no, cocking is like drawing a sword out of a she's, it would be like. You gotta, you gotta pull it all the way out, cause it's getting it ready, so.
No, alright, so, alright, so no doubt because of Clodur's excellent looks and his earlier pontificating on the rules of romance.
Indeed.
He is seen as something of an expert in the ways of the heart. And so a nearby knight asks you for help in composing a love poem for his sweetheart.
Oh god. Oh god.
Compose zero.
I can't help him.
Starts at zero.
You could impassionate.
I will, I will impassionate with my honor.
That'd be so bad.
I love it.
Which I make.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Uh, my honor is nineteen.
Alright, so check it and give your, you're rolling a ten or less on compose.
Yep, don't fail.
Shut up, Dave. Don't talk about my dice, don't talk near my dice.
He's already breathed on them, so it's too late now.
Breathing on my dice, no! Dave, this is your fault.
Known as shock.
Yes, you have failed an impassioned skill, therefore you are now in shock.
Oh no.
That you could have done such a thing, so. You're gonna roll two D six and tell her what you got.
Ten.
Uh, ten is.
Two.
Two.
Yeah.
Yes, so rolled a D six twice, please.
One?
Uh huh.
Six.
So you lose a point of size.
Yep.
What?
You're going, you're going to, you're going to be wasting away due to lack of appetite.
You don't eat anything else at the feast.
That's right.
No, I couldn't possibly.
I'm tinier.
Yeah, your size was like what to begin with?
It was ten.
No!
So now it's nine.
You're Peter Dinklage, you're so attractive, but you're like really short.
That would be like six or less.
Five or six, yeah.
Yeah.
No, average is like.
Average is ten.
Oh, okay.
I'm like Tom Cruise.
Yeah, but now, but now you're like, you don't even have mass.
Yeah, now you're skinny, emaciated Tom Cruise.
I've got lean muscle.
Oh my god.
I'm a runner.
Your distended belly tells a different story.
Round two?
Let's do another round.
App rolls.
Rolls.
So don't roll a twenty.
Yeah, good.
Unless you have a twenty.
Unless you have a twenty.
And then roll a twenty by all means.
I got a four.
I've failed.
I like that uh, that you will never leave a feast.
Richard Harris, that's his name.
I wanted to say Richard Harris, but then I didn't believe it.
He will forever be King Arthur for me, forever and anything, because my mom like taped that off of the TV at one point.
Okay.
So it watches so much in my life.
Yeah, yeah.
And Vanessa Redgrave shall always be Gwenniver.
We'll see how Charlie Hunnam does it. Uh, okay, and Randy, uh.
Randy, full apfel.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Clodur, nice, Arthur.
I succeed.
Nice, did you all succeed?
I failed.
Failed, okay, so what are you gonna be doing?
I'm going to be flirting.
Okay, flirt on.
Baby, I can prescribe anything I like. Flirting, I fail.
She's like, what's prescribe? Alright, oh, by the way, when you're flirting on a failed app roll, it's flirting with the serving wenches.
Yeah.
It's not flirting with anyone.
No, it's not, it's not plays, it's serving wench.
Yeah, alright, so how about Kaelus, what is he up to, still, still chatting with the uh?
I was, I was gonna sing with her.
Oh, you're gonna sing to her, that's right, alright, go nuts.
I'm gonna do pa, do my family passions.
Okay.
Three.
She is a lady your mother could have provoked.
So it's twenty-two with the check.
Okay, great.
Come on.
Nineteen.
Oh, you crits?
Crits. Cause you would have added two to that and it gets you up at twenty or above.
Check your singing.
I already did check it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's true.
He, yeah, he had that awesome song for Melon earlier.
Two checks?
No, you can only check one.
Yeah.
He is known for his songs for the.
Oh, I'm totally.
You, yeah, this time you bust out like, you know, a good love, love song, you know, so she's actually quite into it.
What is love?
Baby, don't hurt me. Like at the height, you're like perfect.
Alright, and how about Tolador?
Um, he is going to uh tell a great story to the people near him. Um, of his, uh, I guess, they're probably not all that great.
Squirehood.
He's trying to get his name on the map.
That's exactly what it's all about. Anything that I can say about myself to like talk myself up a little bit, like I should be tonight, but I'm not yet.
I think I heard about that guy.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a shame.
Heard about that guy, yeah, exactly.
And build favor with, you know, the people in the room.
Alright, great, so um, so you can target the, you know, sort of most prestigious knight uh here. In this hall, who, let's see here, just figuring out who that may be.
Arthur.
Yeah, oh yeah, Arthur's been here the whole time, by the way.
Yeah, just sitting in the corner.
Yes, incognito, you recognize him at last.
Ah, fools. Well, Merlin did pull that trick on you a couple times, so.
Merlin's a dick.
The masked polecat.
Most famous knight and.
Uh, okay.
Missing.
So yeah, sir. Um, yeah, yes, that's true, actually, many, many roundtable knights.
Are no.
Are, are no more.
No, no, it's, it's not roundtable knights, it's uh.
Or not roundtable knights.
It's unknown knights, because roundtable knights were escorting the uh the prince of King Mark.
Right.
So they should be back.
They are back, actually.
It's just the no names and Sir Siegbret that are gone.
Yes, it's a long story, alright, so hanging out in this hall is Sir Yvain. He's known as the Knight of the Lion, because he uh normally travels with a black uh panther companion. That he um rescued from a dire circumstance and became a boon companion too.
It's awesome.
He's also the son.
Like you, I'll show you my cats.
He's also the son of Morgan le Fay, but uh, you know, he tries not to let that, you know.
The less we talk about that, the better.
Yeah.
They have so much to bond, it's so amazing.
Alright, so yeah, go ahead and give me an orate to uh strike it up with Sir Yvain.
Um, okay, orate, um, can I uh passion that with like feel to the lord?
You can definitely do honor, uh, cause you're trying to like advance your, your name.
Yeah, again.
Yeah.
Uh, I succeeded that.
Great, so check your honor and you get a plus ten to your orate.
Plus ten, heck yeah. Uh, two.
Two, okay, that's, that'll be a success, awesome.
Yeah.
So yeah, you, you chat your name up to Sir Yvain using the mutual love of cats as a uh, as an inn.
Yes. Awesome, oh man.
And uh, yeah, Cladur, roll on the feast table, or are you gonna try and chat anyone up?
Uh, I would like to do the feast table.
Alright, go nuts.
Do what, okay, so.
So what'd you roll on your app?
I got a four out of twenty.
Great, so go ahead and roll D twenty.
Eight.
An eight. Okay. Let's see, alright, so over near the uh fireplace, the dancers have moved on at this point as uh the smoked salmon is brought out and um.
Favorite.
And uh over uh over near the fireplace, uh, a bard is um telling tales of the of the good folk.
Oh.
Yes, so make a roll against fairy lore.
Hey, I put ten into fairy lore.
I know, Dave, shut up.
I'm confused, so you get two options, you can either do something you wanna do, or you do something that.
You can you can try and talk to somebody, like you're talking to the lady, Elizabeth or uh.
I'm just saying, well, she's choosing the table thing.
Yeah, so you can either have a random event happen to you, or you can approach a certain NPC or.
Oh, okay.
Can I uh passionate with my hospitality? I wanna be polite to whoever's talking to me about fairy lore, even though I have like no idea what they're talking about.
Hospitality is a very tricky passion because it kinda has to be your hospitality. You know, and since you're you're at Arthur's court, it doesn't really apply, unfortunately.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Fantastic. Yeah.
I don't know how I would wedge honor in there.
You might not have anything else.
I don't think there's a passion that's gonna do it, no.
Unless you have.
Unless you have the fae passion, exactly.
Unless you like Sudeig.
There's nothing fae, nothing fae about Bordeaux is there? Okay, alright, well then we're gonna do this and see if I can roll a one. Two!
So close.
What'd you need to roll? One?
One!
That's funny.
Oh, alright, I didn't make it. It's not been a great feast for Cladur.
Alright, let's do one more round.
It's alright, his romance is still.
After rules, everyone.
I'm not gonna fail this one.
I'm gonna fail. No, you critted.
Yeah, what's that mean?
Uh, that means you get a plus five to whatever you have to roll.
Whatever skill you're gonna roll.
Did I check it or anything or no?
Nope.
Nope. Failed.
Failed and.
Sixteen out of twenty.
Made it.
And made it.
And then critted.
Critted what?
He critted.
Oh, critted, yes. Uh, alright, so Tolador, what will you be doing? Uh, drinking, uh, intriguing or flirting?
Um, certainly flirting.
Okay, go for the flirt.
Yes.
So if you wanna expand your family, you can always impassion to a family, get some bastards.
That's true.
You have to crit with flirting to take things further.
Further with the serving wedge, otherwise it's just a little wink, wink and a tushy slap.
Yeah.
Alright, well, this is to impassion and I succeed with a five.
Great, so check that passion.
And what's your flirting?
And my flirting is ten, so is it modified by the impassion?
Yes.
So that was funny.
So it's now twenty. Natural twenty.
Uh, no, I got a four.
Okay, well, wink, wink and a tushy slap.
Got some groping done.
Yeah, exactly, a little. A little good game there.
What's a feast without some groping? Alright, so how about Caligaris?
From my storytelling prowess to.
Caligaris.
Eventually Yvain's like, well, you know, nice meeting you, I have to go over here now. Oh, something was slipped under your door.
It's a bill.
Oh, okay.
Probably the final bill. Yeah, alright, so um.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so six out of uh, well, I rolled a six for my app out of twelve.
Thank you, thank you, and go ahead and roll your D twenty.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sir.
Sixteen, sir. You find yourself watching the court jester for a while as he entertains the crowd with slapstick routines and impersonation.
I can do that.
Roll your worldly.
Oh, oh man, really?
What's worldly?
Uh, it's opposite of spiritual, so mine's a four.
Okay.
I fail.
You find his routines rather dull and old fashioned and return to drinking and eating instead.
Yawn.
Yeah, if you'd critted that roll, there would've been some interesting things going on. Alright, so. Alright, so Kaelus will be talking to Lady Elizabeth, you get a plus five to anything you choose to roll.
Take him to be passionate about this with my love for my family.
Of course.
And then I'm gonna do flirting, maybe I can get eighteen, you know, told I'd be a total eighteen with flirting.
Okay, so you're flirting right now, like base, your flirting is.
Three.
Three, so eighteen, yes, you got it.
My family?
Yep.
Let's see if he crits.
Endelbell or.
I probably gonna fail. Elizabeth.
Oh, you can't fail your.
Thirteen.
Alright, so you make your love family.
So it's an eighteen or less on flirting, absolutely.
Six.
Made it, okay, great.
I was trying to see what to do.
Well, what she's gonna do, she's gonna generate a more passion for you.
Ooh!
So what's that mean?
So she generates a chaste love passion, which may uh evolve into a slightly less than chaste passion.
What's that mean? A chaste stalking passion.
A chaste stalking passion.
Okay, so you never have like in olden days, people courted before they had sex with each other.
In the days of yore.
It wasn't just a, you you meet on Tinder, you have a drink at a bar and you go back to your place. It used to have like long courtships.
Right.
So this is like the beginnings of that.
Yes.
Oh, really?
It means basically she'll take your name back to the queen and be like, I really wanna marry Sir Kaelus.
Oh, cool.
That.
Yeah.
I'm so into him.
And every year you will do tasks for her.
Oh.
To increase her um, increase her desire to marry you.
Okay.
Or allow you to sniff sniff her rose and.
Oh, yeah.
I am. Alright, so very good, and so Sir Cladur.
Indeed, I got a sixteen out of twenty.
Great, uh, D twenty roll, please.
Three.
A three.
One, two, three.
Nearby knights are boasting of their great deeds, roll proud to join in.
Oh, alright then.
Oh, yeah.
What's your proud?
Ten.
Ten.
I will uh, let's see, can I passion this with my honor?
Uh, if you feel like you wanna join in that badly, then yes.
I do.
What have you done?
Nothing's noteworthy. I beat him in a joust.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, that's, you know, that's.
I have some impeccable horsemanship.
You are undefeated in the joust.
I am undefeated in the joust, that's exactly right. My honor's at stake. It can't be left out of this conversation.
What's the honor?
My honor's nineteen.
Oh, yeah, you get it.
Yeah, I have eleven, okay.
Check your honor and you get a plus ten to your proud.
Fantastic, so twenty.
Okay.
Unable to fail.
Nice.
Go six out of twenty.
Great, alright, so you join in. So now you have to roll orate.
Oh, no. Oh, no, it's okay, it's okay, I have a ten, cause I'm Roman.
Oh, good. Cause of law.
I'm genetically good at orating.
Genetically good.
He may wanna honor that.
You can't passion it either, can you? Uh, you couldn't passion it, yeah, with the same.
Can I do honor as well? Okay, so I roll it again?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, sixteen out of nineteen.
Okay.
You just go mad.
Twenty again, some eight.
Yeah, that would be amazing.
Eight out of twenty.
Couldn't handle it.
It would be hilarious. It would also be super fitting for this character.
You spread screaming, one, yes! Pressure.
Okay, you you succeed on the first, you're gonna have three opponents, so you succeed on the first, roll the second. You're still impassioned, so.
Still impassioned? Fantastic, okay. Oh, one out of twenty?
I failed, so another success and third opponent.
Three out of twenty.
And I failed that one too.
Shit.
So clearly, because you're in one of the sub halls, there really aren't that many notable knights around, so so it was kinda even playing field.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm incredibly attractive, so it's all better.
That's true, actually, yeah. Like, well, he is incredibly attractive.
He's incredibly attractive, how can you argue with that?
Let's not question his story.
Really can't argue with that. Alright, so in due chorus, the feast wraps up.
Do I get anything out of that?
You got some glory for it.
Okay, fantastic, do I check my orate or no, since I just?
Check that orate, check that orate.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
It's gonna need it.
Can I check my flirting?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Yeah, that was some serious flirting.
Of course.
Getting you places, Sir Kaelus.
Indeed, he's gonna be married to the queen's handmaiden.
Can I try, uh, since I was successful in my intrigue, I check it too, right?
Yes.
So affirmative name. Be able to help out soon.
She isn't gonna have any hands free.
Oh!
Oh.
I was gonna say she's not gonna be maiden as much longer.
Oh!
Oh, she's a virgin, really?
Yeah.
Probably.
I would say most of these.
They tend to prize that before. It tends to be a bit of a big deal.
Alright.
Is it Anne Hathaway then?
Yes.
Yes, good job, you're gonna marry Anne Hathaway.
I'm all about that. Can I be like inscripted on that, like Anne Hathaway, the little little subtext, Sir Kaelus, it's boy can hurt, the end.
Oh, yeah, I'll put it on her NPC profile, absolutely. This is all canonical to the campaign.
I totally just like in and.
You're also gonna have like four years to close the deal before the rest of the PC's come back to camp.
Close the deal. Okay, so let's just go through the tournament resolution here, so.
Is it that long really to marry a lady in waiting?
No, no, it can, it can, but.
Wow.
I'm just saying, if you if you don't do very well in the first couple of years, you've still got three more before we come back from the fae land.
Yes.
Fae land?
We went to a tournament.
Tournament on the other side.
It was unfortunate.
Yeah.
I didn't die, it was unfortunate.
Basically David Bowie from Labyrinth was the host.
Oh, wow, this, do you mean that that's the magical part was?
The king of today.
Yes.
Oh, so there's like some magic, there is some.
It's just not like D and D level, where it's like, I'm gonna go buy a healing potion, I'm gonna cast fireball.
It's not available to the player knights.
And it's not really common, cool, day to day, you know, but.
Is there magical items that they can use?
Yeah, you can, you can find enchanted items.
One of the, one of the uh, trophies or the the prize for winning the grand melee of the tournament of the King of tomorrow, today was a plus one sword.
That's right, yeah, plus one to damage, that's right, yeah, and uh, never, what was it, never breaks?
Never breaks.
Yeah.
Indestructible plus one damage.
Yes, that'd be a good sword, you won it.
Plus one D six.
The king of today.
Yeah, he he beat, he beat everybody.
He put up his own sword and took it away.
Amazingly enough, yeah, he was that good, or else he was cheating.
To beat him? Uh, if you could crit as many times as he could and hope that he didn't crit, no, it was more like.
It was an endurance contest.
Yeah, if you had more hit points than he did and could crit as many times as he did, which was every roll.
Oh, he was critting as well?
Yeah.
Oh, you're just lucky, or he does just by playing.
He just has that much skill.
Oh, okay, cool.
Or he was cheating.
Or he was cheating, which is also a possibility, because.
Cause he has no honor.
Yeah.
Right. Anyway, let's all make tourney rolls.
Yeah!
Huzzah! I make it.
Okay.
I don't make it.
Shoot, don't make it.
Oh wait, no, no, I still don't make it, alright.
Is that a natural twenty you roll?
Yeah, I rolled a natural twenty.
That would be a fumble.
Oh dear.
Okay.
What the heck, turn to me, I don't know what that even taught me.
Oh, you have an idea, it's just the wrong one.
The wrong idea. Alright, so if you made it, you get a plus five to any one skill used in this tourney. If you failed, no effect. If you fumbled, you suffer minus five to all skills used in this tourney.
Damn it, that sucks.
I made it.
Just not your day for the tournament.
That's why I put tourney as my fifteen.
Think about Lady Elizabeth.
No, I'm trying to.
I have a ten in tourney.
That's my.
I had that too, yeah.
That's not bad.
That's why I took first day, just because he ordered his squire not to worry about it. I knew he would do it, he'd be like, don't worry about it, squire, I got this. I'm okay, I would be like, no, I'm healing you.
No, no, really.
I got this, squire, you back off.
We have uh, an extra D twenty rolling around that I could use.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Is there a way I could've been passionate about that or not?
Matched to your laptop or anything?
No.
No, no.
We tend not to for tourney rolls.
It's it's, yeah, you don't wanna.
No, that's cool.
Just in general, what with the threat of failure and shock. Um, okay, so let me determine the tournament difficulty level here and.
Lancelot.
I'm still shocked about how horrible that poem was.
Actually, uh, everyone give me awareness rolls.
Thanks, I'm actually I'm good with.
I make it.
Success.
I fumbled.
Oh!
Nice.
I'm way too busy like brushing my hair.
Yeah.
You gotta look good.
Hey, guys, I success.
Yeah!
I success.
Yeah!
I success, I smart.
Success rose.
So, um.
Well, that negative five.
That that would be at a negative five.
Oh, I still made it.
Okay, those of you who made it noticed that Lancelot is not participating in this tournament.
I know.
He is up in the uh royal stands, uh, kind of off to the side in his capacity as Q- Queen's champion.
Who's Lancelot in the?
Uh, Viggo Mortensen.
Yeah, Viggo Mortensen.
So he is Aragorn in uh the Lord of the Rings.
How did that all turn out? That whole. Okay, got it. Claim earlier.
Strida.
The claim?
The claim about the.
About bastard.
Oh, right, yeah.
Is he bouncing a baby boy on screen?
You you see this this Lady Elaine, it has to be Lady Elaine, she's she's with.
So she, who's she cast?
No, Elaine, not Alina, okay, we're good.
Who is Elaine? Who who's cast as Elaine?
Uh, who is cast as Elaine? I don't remember, um.
Dave, Dave.
I don't know, I've never seen Lady Elaine before.
You have a phone!
I don't know if I had that, actually. Anyway, uh, but she is there with a uh, with a young lad who um, looks a little, like he could be related to Lancelot. It could be, and those of you who made your awareness are noticing that he is pointedly not looking at her.
Oh!
You got fucked up today.
I fumbled my awareness, I have no idea what's going on.
You are looking in a mirror.
Yeah, I'm brushing my hair, it's like.
Little silver pallid.
When you look this good, you gotta keep it.
That's right, it takes work, man.
I cut your hair and I'm like, it's okay, shorty.
Don't touch the hair.
Don't touch the hair, I spend a lot of time on my hair. Alright, uh, however, the uh weather is unseasonably hot for this time in May.
Yay.
That's no good for your complexion.
And uh, what that does mean is that not, a lot of knights are actually gonna be sitting out, so that's good for you guys. Now, as for uh Tolador, you won't be able to participate in the joust or melee, but you can participate in the challenges.
Yes, I will do every one.
Okay.
To all of the challenges.
You can participate in the Gaelic games, uh, throwing tree stumps and whatnot. No, uh, basically, it's just, yeah, you can just um, you can challenge other squires to to fight, you know, and uh, just sort of, you know, just prove your medal, I guess you could say, so. You know, get noticed, get noticed.
That's all I can do. Playing Lady Elaine, she's uh.
Yeah, I think she was uncast, actually.
She's got a picture, but I don't think there's anyone famous.
Oh, Elaine of Carbonak? There's a lot of Elanes.
Yeah, Elaine Elaine of Carbonak is cast, but not, I can't recognize her.
Oh, okay.
Like here, bring her over here, share with the group.
Oh, that's right, Tori Amos.
Oh, very good!
There she is.
Fantastic!
So.
Ooh, they make nice babies.
See, it's just so, Hand Dragon listeners, no, I cannot recognize Tori Amos.
On sight, that's that's an important life skill you might wanna work on. You might meet her in a dark alley and it could be your life.
And say, oh, Lady Elaine, I mean Tori Amos.
Alright, so let's find out how you did in this tournament, so we'll start with.
Juicing.
With the juicing and Sir Caligaris, go ahead and roll your juiced.
Alright.
Your lance.
Juiced it up.
Yes.
Skill of five.
That's right.
I fail.
Okay, and. Oh, that was a floor dice, it counted, seventeen, uh.
Yeah, that's right.
It's been established. Alright.
Canon now.
I'm totally gonna save your life.
With a seventeen, that's a success, you failed.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, fuck me. Alright, so what happens is you take damage that represents aggregate of damage that you've taken over the course of the jousting rounds. So this goes straight to hit points, no armor protection.
Oh, jeez.
And on a failure, it's four D six.
Oh, yeah!
Oh, I rolled kinda low.
Good.
Uh, yeah, ten points.
Ten points, I got four less.
He's alive!
Easily killed.
I'm still conscious.
Oh, totally healing. Yeah, it could've very easily.
I'm totally healing, huh?
Alright.
You're not done, I'm gone.
Fumble, 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 fumble!
Alright.
Alright, so roll a D three.
Oh, you're rolling.
Uh, two.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, I'm well enough to go into the melee.
Oh my god, alright, so go ahead and roll uh your sphere expertise.
Can I use my passion even though I have a negative five? Can I be passionate?
Yes, you can impassion.
I'm freaking A in my passions, yeah.
What are you impassioning?
Family, my family, my honor. My love for my family is definitely, my dad taught me how to joust, and I definitely don't want to disappoint him. You know, that's the only thing I knew my father in was jousting and swords craft, but everything else, he pretty distant.
When he used to hit you.
Yeah.
Jousting lance.
Yeah, five.
And so let's see, your sphere expertise is.
So he would have a ten.
He had a ten. Oh, ten total, thank you. I rolled a fourteen, so.
Minus five.
Double twenty.
Oh, so yeah, he would just be a five, five out of twenty.
He rolled a five, okay. So, wait a minute, no, but there'd be a plus five to his skill. Oh, I get you, so there's no modifier.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, I rolled a fourteen, that beats your five. So that's a partial success for you.
Yeah.
So you're still gonna take some damage. Ooh, ouch, fourteen total.
With armor?
Nope.
Nope, after armor.
Oh, women.
So fourteen points of damage.
Banged up.
Ignoring armor.
Yeah.
That would have killed the game.
That would bring me exactly to zero.
Yep. Four, hold on, four.
However, I'm glad it didn't because then that would put me in the unconscious state where I could not join the melee. Where I'm going to thrive.
As he's like limping along.
I'm going to destroy.
Yourself.
Everyone who doesn't like London.
Alright, so Sir Cladur.
Alright, fabulous. So I'm rolling my lance. We're not impassioning, right? It's not allowed.
I just did.
Gonna passionately with my honor. Cannot, I can lose a chance.
This is a moneymaker.
Okay, so yeah, make that. So that's gonna be a twenty-six.
Okay, so you're gonna add six to your roll.
Excellent, so that would be a twenty total of twenty-six.
That would be a crit, and I rolled a nineteen. So Sir Cladur wins the Pentecost Joust.
That's right.
No damage sustained on your road to victory.
If you ever wonder how Sig bright or any of Jade's characters lived throughout all of her, all of our adventures, it's because she always wins and never takes any damage.
That's right.
Guys, just get better at lancing.
Yeah, pretty much, guys.
Probably just get better at rolling dice, guys.
Alright, so the next day is the, after three days of jousting, because there's so many knights. The fourth day is the challenges, so that'll be Talador's time to shine. What weapon will you be using?
I don't know that I have one.
You have a sword?
You know, I selected spear.
Oh, so you're gonna be using.
You got a sword and a spear.
You got a sword and a spear.
Oh, okay.
Sword or a spear.
Oh, I thought I had to pick one of these.
No, no, sword and spear.
I would suggest spear if you didn't put any points into sword.
Yep, that's what happened.
Okay.
Look at your heraldry, oh my god, how cute is that?
Is it, is it a cat rampant?
It's a, it's a pot bellied cat rampant.
Nice.
We need to take a picture of that?
Yes.
And get it up on the website.
The world needs to see this.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Vector that, so it looks good.
Alright, so let's roll off here. You're facing off against another squire in a spear battle.
Okay.
Would you care to impassion?
Of course.
Okay.
I guess, well, my honor at this point, I keep.
Definitely, I mean, if you're trying, if you're trying to get knighted here, the honor would definitely be a candidate.
Yeah, I just like, I don't want, like, I still, care about the, the.
Your rank.
My, what's he called, my lord?
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I don't want him to look shitty because I'm not knighted.
Yeah, yeah, so you can also do fealty, yeah.
Yeah, so that's kind of, I've been like, it's kind of both. I don't really know.
Which one's higher?
Fealty.
Oh, yes.
Well, that didn't work out.
It wasn't me this time.
A fumble on a passion roll means that he goes mad.
Uh, because you fumbled your passion roll.
The why is the question. So essentially, you walk out on the field. There is these huge grandstands that have been erected. This is the biggest tournament of the entire year. The king is there, Sir Gawain is there. Sir Lancelot is there. They're all looking at you. The pressure is just too much. And you run away screaming.
It's a very honorable way to leave a tournament, Sir Dag is established.
Kidding.
It was all going so well.
It was, it was.
At this point in time, you hand your character sheet over to the chief.
Yeah, well, I don't have anywhere to put it, so that's fine.
And I was going to hook up with the lady.
Mary Lady Melody now.
Sir Tigray's not gonna have a house to live in.
Poor Sir Tigray.
Does he character automatically go insane? He's, he's basically out of the game, and then there's a table I'm gonna roll on to see what he gets, what he gets up to. But yes, he's forgotten himself.
Wow, damn.
He's forgotten.
Holy cow. I should have focused on saving Randy, dang it. That other, other squire got off light.
His score is like, I win.
I'm just intimidating, bring it, bro.
Yeah, exactly.
He's probably, he's probably like your eighth, the eighth brother with a size six.
It's like super tiny.
It's just as smaller as they come out.
It's not like a gift bar.
Size four, thank you very much.
Wait, you're not size four.
No, I'm size seven, because I had to add four to that.
Because it's, you rolled a four and you added three, yeah. Okay, melee.
Now.
Melee.
Yeah. So basically, there are two teams, team Camelot versus team visitors. Um, and furthermore, there are smaller sub-teams, like professional tournament teams that are fighting.
That's right.
So they're like kind of banding together.
Has it been a while?
Has it been a while?
How many days?
No, it has not been a week.
It has not been a week at all.
Can I still make heal checks on him to gradually, because I want him to be tip top shape?
Sadly, no.
What?
Tournaments can be deadly. We've actually had a character die in a tournament.
What about his, his squire? Did squire make healing tents?
Sadly, no.
It would not have been. Is there a way I can be sneaky and use like, go by town and buy a healing potion for him?
I don't think you have.
Potion. You could convince him to use it.
Can I roll to convince that?
No, you just have to see if Susan wants to use her healing potion on, on her good friend and cousin, Sir Caligaris.
Yeah, that's right.
Your, 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 your prescription of scriptus longus.
I, I wish I could roll against this.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good cause. I don't want my kinsmen to, to suffer.
Expire. He's looking a little rough. He's pretty bruised up. He's got a black eye.
Yeah, no, it sounds horrible. So here, have five points of heals.
Alright, so roll a D twenty on a one through three, it's gone.
Don't give me that look. I know you want it to be gone. Maybe it won't be. Thirteen, Dave, suck it.
Alright, so I've got eleven hit points now. I'm almost at full.
You could give him another dose if you wanted to, risk running out of it.
Yes, let's.
Get him back up to full, I see.
Holding your nose and.
I know, it doesn't taste good.
Spoonful of sugar, oh.
Let's take another five points. Eight.
Alright, I'm up to full.
Feels good.
You can keep using the potion over and over?
Apparently so.
Well, as much as you want, you're just risking that you're going out of it.
You're not gonna die clown. You're not gonna die clown.
I'm not sure who the clown is here.
Right.
Well, one of us is a clown, the other one is a monkey with the symbols.
So, uh, so yeah, there are, there are knights on the fields who have formed their own teams within the teams. You also notice that all the roundtable knights are wearing green sashes. So it's something having to do with an adventure Gawain had last year with some sort of green knight. Anyway.
One of my favorite Arthurian legends, by the way.
Okay, so let's see how you all do in the melee.
Alright, so I'm gonna add my plus five from succeeding at the tourney onto my two-handed flail to give me a twenty in two-handed flail. And is it possible for me to rep London in this?
Yes, oh.
Boy from London town.
Loyalty to your city?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so let's see if I succeeded that. I don't.
Okay, so that's a minus five.
Yep, so loyalty London goes from a fifteen to a thirteen. And.
Why do you lose two?
Oh, you lose one immediately by failing a, a passion roll. You lose the other if you don't want to spend time being melancholy for fifteen weeks.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
So, alright, so instead of being a twenty, a two-handed flail, it is a fifteen.
Okay. I rolled a fourteen against a twenty.
I rolled a nine out of fifteen.
Okay, that's a failure, four D six damage. Twelve points of damage.
Unconscious. Wait, do I fall off my horse, though?
No, because it's not in one, not in one fell swoop. No, you are on horses, but you're just bashing on each other.
You're a two-handed flail.
Heal. Heal.
He'll heal anyway.
Okay, good.
It's the end of the tournament.
I'm not dying.
Alright, but go ahead and roll your weapon skills. Yeah, well, you did. So you can use spear or any other weapon.
Totally doing love for my family, because my dad taught me how to use this spear, right?
Only taught you how to use a, I'm pretty sure he said he only taught you how to use a lance.
And I, and I made it. He said, no, I said all weaponry.
All weaponry.
All weaponry.
All of the weapons.
I think Jake.
So I made it.
Jake, listen through this.
Twenty.
Only thing that Sir Calis's father taught him was how to use the lance.
He rolled a two, I rolled a four, so that's a fail for you.
What the heck, people?
So you're gonna take, eh, not bad, only ten points of damage.
At least I'm okay. At least I'm not dead.
Okay, and.
Comet sucks.
Cladur.
Cladur, okay, uh, alright. Sword.
You have a personal plate.
So I can.
Oh, but you don't get armor, I get.
I can passion this with my honor, yes?
Yes, you can.
Okay, got that.
Okay.
So.
I'm very good at twenty.
Twenty-five.
It'll be funny, all them and the remaining two.
Seventeen out of twenty-five, so I added five, I add five to it.
Right.
Yes.
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 So that would be a twenty-two.
See, crit. And I did not. So Cladur wins the melee as well.
Oh, my god.
Means that you win the chainmail barding and the tack and accoutrement, which are worth ten libra.
Ooh, sweet.
In total.
I feel like I wasted my money on armor that I can't even use. So disappointing.
Alright, so.
Well, if you accepted a challenge.
That's good. You'll look excellent in it.
I beat you, remember?
That was, that wasn't a challenge, that was a trial at arms.
Yeah. You got paper cutted, if we win.
Fantastic. My, my winning things will back up my great story last night.
This is definitely something. You were, you were a new knight and you won the Pentecost tournament, so.
Yeah, jousting and melee.
Yeah, seriously.
If one of us would have won, would we have faced her then?
Yes, yeah, if, if you, if two people crit, then you have to face off.
Okay.
Yeah, to see who wins.
That would have probably been dead for sure. I'll have seven.
I would have been dead. I would have liked it, too.
You guys are gonna be hearing about Cladur.
Dead and loving it.
Yeah, it's true, we're gonna hear about Sir Cladur.
How incredibly handsome he is.
Frowning.
Amazing he is.
Time progresses, I get my health back, right? Yes, everyone heals up.
Thank god.
God, I'm thinking of Sir Pureheart.
Oh, Sir Pureheart.
Oh, he's so much better.
You're no longer two.
Heal up there, buddy.
No, I don't.
No, I refuse to heal.
Like, I don't want.
Trying to feed him.
He tried to starve himself to death.
Alright, meanwhile, ooh. Interesting. Alright, Randy, I rolled on the madness activity table to see what sort of shenanigans Talador got up to.
Yes, what kind of shenanigans did?
I got a fifteen, which is on the table, there's only a few results that are only one number, and that's one of them. And it says, you were taken care of by a poor knight. His death released you from his company. You received the benefit of his large S. So.
Alright.
Yes, this, this poor knight nursed you back to health and then granted you his lands. As well as a letter of introduction to the king, asking him to knight you.
Best madness ever.
That worked out well.
I would agree.
All I needed to do was go run screaming from like a tournament. Who knew?
Freaking knew.
Long-term goal achieved. And that was my short-term goal. My long-term goal is to keep David alive.
Even better, not only did you get knighted, you have like land.
Yeah, well, now, of course, he's a poor knight, so it's not great land.
Yeah, plenty of land for your.
Still have a place for Sir Tigray to live.
It's, it's still a huge step up from whatever I had before.
Which was nothing. Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so this knight's land is in the Duchy of Lindsay. You had wandered that far north. Basically, it's like about a hundred and fifty miles north of Camelot.
Man.
Before he found you. He was just kind of like walking along the roads crying to himself.
You were naked.
Like fairy forest cup, he just kept running.
Didn't stop running. So, yeah, and, um, let's see, so, yeah, you were, you were well taken care of. So the, uh, the year progresses. You all returned home. Uh, and then, let's see, so who, who all has land aside?
I do.
I have a friend that has land. I have two friends that have land. I got, I give that more of a reward than actually owning land. Hey buddy, old pal, can I stay? Yeah, thanks.
I don't think I have land.
You're all household knights, I believe, right? Except for Caligaris, who is a free holding.
Yep, I have no lord. I go where the wind takes me.
Literally, because you're this big.
Once the wind starts blowing, I go in the direction that it blows in.
That's right. So, uh, word goes out late in the year. The king is in a great distress.
Uh-oh.
Yes, apparently Talador is not the only one to go mad this year. None other than Sir Lancelot has disappeared.
No.
Apparently stricken with madness. All that was known is that, um, in the guest chamber at Camelot, where Lady Elaine's, Lady Elaine and her retinue were staying, a broken window was found. With the glass breaking out rather than in. And Lancelot is nowhere to be seen. Elaine is tight lipped and is returning to Carbonak with her son.
Gasp.
At any rate, the king and queen have made it known that they would very much like if Lancelot could be located and returned. Lost Lancelot signs go up on every telephone call.
Have you seen this knight?
Have you seen this knight? So, yeah, if you all are interested, then finding Lancelot would bring a great level of glory.
Yes, let's do it.
Let's shout.
I need to take a potty break first.
It was so definite.
But of course.
I'm good.
This is totally happening after I go to the bathroom.
I'm gonna go chill in my friend's place. I'll play with your cat for a little bit. My cat, that's a hundred and fifty miles north of wherever you're at. You gotta go a long way to play with my cat.
Actually, you're, you're a lot closer to, uh, to each other now because.
Hey, buddy, what's up?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, Calis is serving as a household knight in the Kingdom of Maris, so.
Cool.
That's right, you are in the north. So I should point out that in your lands, Sir Calis, things have been very difficult lately. Harvests have not been yielding what they have been in the past.
You're having these things called food tournaments?
Yeah.
That I suck at.
Yeah, some, some lords are resulting, are resorting to having tournaments where food is the prize because people are going hungry.
Wow.
Yes, so.
So that's happening.
So that's happening.
As for me personally, I'm just going, you know, going where the wind takes me.
Yeah, we purchased.
As, as stated.
That's your banner.
That's right.
Evidenced.
I got you.
Yeah. So we're looking for Lancelot.
Yes.
I gotta get, oh, it starts at nine. I mean, I could be a little late.
What? What do you got?
You can also go crazy, it's fine.
Well, it starts at nine. The dance. Oh, I was gonna go, I haven't danced in a while, and I don't wanna get rusty. It sounds like fun.
Alright, well, feel free to bounce when you need to bounce.
Yeah, I mean, I still got time. I mean, I just curious how I'm gonna know.
Yeah. We'll see, we'll see.
My lady in waiting, my lady.
My lady. Okay, well, you're looking for Lancelot. Okay, so, um, how do you want to go about doing that?
I guess we're gonna gather gossip.
That's right, some intrigue maybe.
Yes.
Some folklore perhaps, you could talk to the peasants.
Oh, I definitely want to do honor on this.
No.
No honor. Just straight up intrigue.
You're going riding past and the peasants are like, oh, I wonder if they're looking for Lancelot.
Alright, I make my intrigue.
I do too.
I do as well.
Okay, well, you don't, you don't get any solid leads. However, Lancelot does hold lands in the north. In the, uh, in the lands of Nohout. He has a castle, joyous guard up there. So some people are theorizing that perhaps he will be making his way back to that castle. To, you know, sulk, basically. So that may be a, that may be a direction you want to head.
What's that north then? I'm sure we'll hear stories of, you know, some fantastic knight riding wrongs and destroying entire armies single-handedly.
Or just sulking.
Or just sulking.
Or sulking. Alright, so you do make your way north.
So just to be sure, we never saw Arthur or Guinevere.
That's right.
Okay.
They are increasingly isolated. It's not quite as easy to.
Were they at the tournament at least?
Well, they were at the tournament.
I mean, I've won.
That, actually, yes. You would have seen them, that's true.
Fantastic.
And, uh, and yes, you can pledge homage to Arthur if you want to.
Let's do it.
Okay.
So what is that, three D six?
Uh, four D six.
Four, oh, oh.
So you have another thing you.
Floor dice.
Floor dice, let's see what, I wasn't even rolling, I was just trying to pick it up.
I kinda like floor dice.
Does it count as floor dice? I don't know.
I wasn't trying to roll it, so I don't, I wouldn't say so. I was just trying to pick it up and I dropped it.
Hey, help me get a quid horse.
Oh, my goodness, no. It's okay. Do I add anything to this?
Plus one.
Eight.
Nice. Homage, I guess?
Hail Arthur.
Hail Arthur. And as for the queen, roll your lustful plus ten.
Lustful plus ten, okay.
What's it supposed to do anyway?
It's to see how impressed he is by the queen.
I make it.
You made it. Alright, so you gain a more Guinevere of three D six.
Roll high, roll high, roll high, roll high, roll high.
You shut up.
Three sixes.
Well, I got two fives and a one, so eleven.
Eleven.
Three D six, just straight?
I think so, let me double check. Close that file too soon.
So be more.
Okay, so you made it and. Oh, that's for me, okay, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that's also, it's like the homage, it's four D six plus one.
Oh, apologies.
D six.
So, okay, so fourteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, pretty good.
She's pretty hot.
Pretty hot, I guess. Pretty hot, I guess. Alright, so you guys ride up north.
One away from notable.
That's right.
It is.
So. Much like how, uh, Sir Calus is, uh, accustomed to seeing these lands, uh, suffering, uh, from, um, poor crop yields, uh, you all can't help but notice the same as well. Uh, many of the peasant folk are looking a bit emaciated these days. Uh, at one point, you catch sight of a village.
That's sad.
Nearby on a, on a rise, there's a huge black cloud, uh, hovering over it. Distantly, you can hear a buzzing noise.
Buzzing noise, like cicada buzzing noise?
Locust buzzing noise, let's see it clear.
Like power lines buzzing?
Or let's head into it.
Prepare for.
Let's shout.
Let's head into it, like true brave knights.
What is that?
Prepare arms.
As you ride closer, uh, you see that the cloud is made up of millions of flies.
Run away!
They begin to descend upon you, your horses whinnying in annoyance and increasing fury at the flies, uh, disturbing them. Everyone roll horsemanship.
Make it.
Oh, a crit on it.
Make it.
Nice.
Check your horse and check. Just check, but see, it's, okay, nevermind.
Randy, aren't you with us?
Am I?
If you wanted.
I've gone insane.
No, no, you're back.
You came back with lamb.
Right, you're like, so hey guys, have a night now.
Technically knighted yet, but you're, you can deport yourself in the manner of a knight without losing any honor.
I completely misinterpreted what happened. I thought it was just his story from there on out.
Not at all.
No, no, you came back.
I can't see.
Better than before.
Better, stronger, faster.
They rebits you, they had the technology.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
I put my D twenty on.
You don't.
Compared to, would you like to use one of mine?
Oh, I think I grabbed it.
There it is.
Sorry.
David's like, this is mine now, since you've gone mad.
Well, I had to roll two D twenty out of the table.
I just left it all sat in there, so it's fair that it got taken.
Alright, so go ahead and roll your horsemanship.
Okay, that's gonna go well.
Just don't fumble it.
It's a pony, it won't hurt that hard.
No, it's fourteen.
Not much if you fall.
Right?
For horsemanship fourteen, yep.
Yeah.
Fine.
Twenty.
Well, there you go.
So why don't you switch dice?
To be fair, ponies are mean.
I'm going.
You are, you are thrown from your.
Tomorrow.
You are thrown from your horse, you take two points of damage from the fall, and the horse goes charging off, beset by bottleflies.
To be fair, it's pony.
Never to be.
It is, it's a war pony.
You know what, why don't you just hop up onto the front of my horse because I'm only a size four?
You know what, you could ride one of my.
But I'm size fourteen.
Well, you, there are horses, there are knights that ride these that are size twenty.
You could ride one of my rounsees or my sumter.
A rounsee is perfectly fine, that's a riding horse.
Yeah, here, ride one of my rounsees.
It's actually a step up from your pony anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, here you go.
Alright then. Doing that.
Cause I am nothing if not merciful. Nothing sucks like having to walk.
How generous are you?
Was your, was your?
Not terribly.
I mean, below average.
Below average.
But not like the worst.
Alright.
Nobody wants to be walking.
What did we find that caused this horse, these flies?
Ah, well, uh, yeah, since the rest of you, since the rest of you made your rolls. You are of course, you are of course obliged to, um, to move on. Um, uh, by the flies, you can't linger very long.
Of course.
But, uh, yeah, no, there's just, um, there's no visible sign of what's causing this fly infestation.
What village was this?
It was just some village that you encountered.
Random village.
Heading up north.
Infested by flies, crazy.
Wow, really glad I don't have a closed face helmet.
Yeah, really glad, right? Of course, when they fly up under your, your visor, then that's really annoying.
Yeah, so open face helmet, kinda nice, gotta just wave them away.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Alright, so you ride on. About a week passes as you make your way north towards Nohout.
Okay, well, no more war pony.
No more war pony. Um.
That rounse is alone, by the way.
Did not transfer the title.
Yeah.
Uh, so in due course, um, you know, after passing through a few.
Calling the scourge.
Functioning villages, let's just say, uh, you find another village that's falling into ruin. Um, riding through it, you see no sign of the inhabitants, but you do see, uh, maybe a dozen or two dozen people out in the field, which is overgrown with weeds and grass, and they're crawling about on all fours.
Hmm.
I would like to make a sandcheck.
Do they appear to be trying to do anything like harvest crops?
It looks like they're pulling up the weeds and eating them.
Oh, okay, they must be really hungry.
Indeed, they see you, and they begin to crawl their way towards you begging for food.
Oh god.
We're starving, please!
We have to, we have to, what's it, we're to check for that. Do I have anything to give them?
Merciful, I think.
I am, oh, I'm gonna make this.
In, in terms of what you have, you just have what, you know, your sort of, uh, trail rations that you brought with you, some breads and sauces.
Uh, nineteen on a ten.
You're like, fuck off.
He like kicks one in the face, he's like, you know what?
Yeah, yeah, I failed my merciful and.
I have a merciful nineteen, so I'm gonna help them out.
Do I really need a roll for cruel?
Make a cruel roll, yeah.
What's that?
Eleven on ten.
On my merciful.
Well.
And.
So if you succeed on merciful, no need to roll cruel.
So I failed on my generous.
Take, take my helm off, so they can all see how incredibly attractive I am.
I have come to rescue you.
Exactly, yes.
Hair flip, hair flip.
Yeah, and then my horse flips his mane too.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden.
Here, eat of my horse.
Yeah. No, not Le Fleur.
And this is where.
I just, uh, I listened to this audiobook on the, uh, on the last days of Berlin in nineteen forty-five, and they were reduced to eating the horses in the town. And this one person saw this thing where this horse had died and just kind of fallen back on its haunches, and they were just carving it up with it just sitting there.
Yeah, that'd be pretty convenient.
Ever practical, Susan.
Ever practical.
Yeah, when you've known enough horses in your life.
Yeah, exactly.
You stop caring about those.
Oh my god.
Jerks.
Jerks.
Okay, so.
Many of them are fantastic.
So you hand out, you hand out some food, uh, yeah, make a generous roll as you, as you do so.
Okay.
See how much food you hand out.
Um, holy crap, I actually made my generous.
Alright, so you give away all of your rations.
Wow.
Cause you feel so sorry for these people.
Wow.
So they thank you profusely as you check both of those traits.
Okay, um, can I, like, while this is happening, can I try to gather a sense of what the heck has happened, like?
It just looks like they're.
Working the fields?
Well, it looks like the fields are just, are dead, there's nothing growing.
Already checked.
Except for weeds.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, they can't, they can't grow anything productive.
Even potatoes, I mean, have you tried potatoes?
What's a potato?
I've heard those are great.
Surely, this is a strange root vegetable you speak of.
It's a devil's roots.
So, when did, when did this start?
When did this start? Um, so the, the sort of town alderman, who looks very corpse-like, uh, tells you that, um, maybe about five years ago, the, uh, the crop yields started to, uh, reduce after many good years. And their stores eventually ran out, and every year was worse than the year before, and, uh, finally, this year, nothing even took seed.
And who, who's their lord?
Uh, they say their lord has abandoned them.
Where's his banner?
Over yonder.
Is it nice?
It's just, it's like totally gutted, you know, like he took everything with him, he took the glass windows, he took the nice oak doors, and then the ceilings all caved in, so it's just, you know.
So sad.
It's a nice looking banner you got there.
Right?
You still got that foundation there.
Yeah, this banner has some good bones.
It has some good bones, exactly, it's a fixer-upper.
Who's manager fun?
Some guy who skipped down on his poor peasants.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is not Lancelot's area?
No, not, no, we haven't even gotten there yet.
You're about a week away from there.
Oh wow, a week away, yeah.
Yeah, it's very far north, very far north.
Alright, well, let's, uh, let's keep heading north.
Alright.
Can't do much here.
No, indeed. Alright, so another week's travel.
Bone meal, I hear that's good.
Have you tried buying cannibals?
No, I mean, like bone meal, turning it into the dirt, it's supposed to help, like a fertilizer.
Okay.
God.
You know cannibalism?
Not all of my characters are cannibals.
Yeah.
Just most.
Just a majority.
So, in due course, over the week of travel, you encounter yet another half-ruined village. Uh, one building is slowly burning.
Is this all Lancelot's fault?
But no, this one, this last one stretched back like five years. I was thinking it was Lancelot's fault, but I mean.
To do with the holy grail thing?
Uh, this probably has to do with the decline of Arthur's reign, but I don't say it out loud because that's not really.
Well, many have noted that the king is not as healthy as he used to be, he looks, he looks quite haunted.
Maybe I'll say that out loud, cause my homage to Arthur is only eight.
I don't even have an homage to Arthur, so I don't even know.
Who's, who's Arthur you guys talking about?
I don't know the guy from Adam, I know his name, but I wouldn't be able to place him on the street.
He gave me a trophy at the tournament.
Did he?
I mean.
You're wearing, your horse is wearing it.
My sweet new, my sweet new saddle.
Uh huh, and that chainmail barney you have in your pack there.
I see.
Oh lord.
How did he look?
What?
How did he look when he handed you the barney?
Uh, a bit ill.
Yeah, like shit.
It looked like shit.
Perhaps the, uh, perhaps the waning health of the king is affecting the land.
Hmm, well, you can all make hunting rolls while you're in this village.
Oh yay, cause we're good at that.
Yeah, I know, you're all ace hunters.
We're amazing at that shit.
Can I be passionate about the love?
So close.
Passive roles.
Oh, I was like I said, my younger brother, he's a hunter, oh wow, one.
My younger brother, he's a hunter. Anyone else make it?
I so close, I got three and my hunting's two.
I totally crit that with a one.
Nice. Well, uh, yeah, so, uh, Calus notices that even though the village is abandoned, there are no tracks leading away from it.
Hmm.
That is so creepy.
What's that mean?
It means that no one left the village even after.
Even though there's nobody here.
Even though it's empty.
Can I look for awareness?
Yeah, you can make awareness roll.
Alright. Thirteen on fifteen.
Yep, you're quite sure the village is totally abandoned, it's just small little peasant huts, there's really nowhere anyone could be hiding. Uh, the, the roofs are caving in, one, like I said, one of the buildings is still kind of half on fire, just a slow burn, you know, so.
Well, what, uh, what season is it?
Uh, it is, uh, summertime.
Okay, so it's warm.
Mm hmm.
Look for treasure.
You made your awareness roll, there's no treasure.
It's a peasant village, they, they don't have two.
Look for hat.
Together.
I want a hat, okay, look for a hat, aware. Two.
It's awfully sunny out here.
You find a straw hat, but the top is missing.
I don't care. I just feel like I want a hat now.
Okay.
And it's a little piece.
This is my hat.
It's a little piece of straw, like, whoop.
Yeah.
This sucks, but there's no tracks leaving out of the village, no.
It looked like a peasant.
But there's gotta be bodies somewhere.
No bodies, no tracks.
But the building's on fire. So that must be the bodies are in the fire building.
That is exactly who I put it.
No sign of burnt bones or charred, charred corpses.
So these have vanished.
Yep.
Well, let's continue heading north to Lancelot's lands.
Indeed.
Alright, could have been a wildfire. Like if everybody died, no one was.
Is there no way to investigate what caused the fires there?
Blah blah.
Um, not with the means you have.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah.
So is there like corpses or anything?
Nope, that's what's freaking me out.
Man.
Man.
Same.
Same zees. Alright, so you press on to the north, making for joyous guard, Lancelot's castle. And, after a couple more days of travel, I'll need everyone to make awareness rolls.
Nope.
Crit, also a crit.
Nice.
I am too busy like brushing Le Fleur's mane while we ride.
Oh my god. So, uh, Calus and Calgaris, you both notice, um, that in an irrigation ditch up ahead, on the side of the road, yeah, cause you're kind of in these like, kind of flat moorlands, you know, there's really not a whole lot of.
Gonna find a picture of Le Fleur.
Oh yeah.
Okay, really not a whole lot of, um, you know, trees or other, you know, scenery really. But you do notice up ahead in irrigation ditch, uh, the sun is glinting off some metal helmets, as if there are people crouching within the ditch.
Oh.
Prepare for battle.
Loosen the swords and scabbards.
We can, we, you, can we, do we notice in the distance?
Unslinging flails.
Like, far enough away that you can do something.
But do they notice us?
Since you critted it, I'm gonna say that you noticed it well before they, uh, can do anything.
Alright, I, I'd like to try to make a maneuver and try to get around them.
Sure thing, give me a battle roll.
Battle is one of your combat skills next year.
I didn't know I could, can I be passionate? Uh, I'm gonna honor with my, I don't wanna lose this battle.
Sure, honor, definitely, yeah.
Nine, and eighteen.
Okay, so plus ten to battle, I'll make it twenty. Twenty. You critted it, alright. So Calus rides off, he's like, I got this.
I do.
What do the rest of you wanna do?
He critted.
Shit. What did you, what'd you crit?
Hell, I crit my awareness.
Oh, you crit.
He both did.
Okay.
I failed my awareness.
Yes, you did.
Brushing the mane, brushing the mane.
So basically, like, Clodor and Tolodor, you, you're, you're just like, need to do, and all of a sudden, like, Calus just wheels off and starts riding off into the moors, like, fuck.
I'll sit back and.
Whatever, he's weird, keep going straight.
Alright, very good, so, uh, so these two are riding ahead, you're gonna rein in?
Um, I sort of noticed it, yeah, so I'll, uh, I'll rein in and call to my friends.
Oh my god, nice. With a crypt main.
That happens naturally.
That happens naturally, okay.
So yeah, so I'll call to my allies to rein in and, uh, and slow their progress.
Okay, let's save this image, I'm not.
So, uh, are you guys slowing up?
Huh? Oh, did you say, say that again?
I called to rein in and slow thine progress.
Slow thine progress.
Slow thine progress.
So, um, I do, and, um, I guess, I, I yell, yell back, like.
Don't yell.
Prithy, slow thine processes, methinks I glimpse some steel within the ditch ahead, over yonder.
So calling out like that, uh, alerts them, obviously, so they, they realize the jig is up. Uh, and they file out of the irrigation ditch, um, they are armed, they have spears and shields.
How many are there?
There are six of them.
Let's ride them down.
Indeed!
Spur to horse, my dear friends, spur to horse.
This should work well, right? This should work well. Um, yeah, they all, they all appear to be perhaps of Saxon blood. Mm hmm.
I don't hate those right now.
And, uh, and they're yelling at you to turn back.
Why?
These are our lands now.
We're just going through, just passing through.
Then you must submit yourself, uh, and pay homage to Prince Ida, the new lord of these lands, now that the cur Lancelot has disappeared. Prince Ida, he's one of our kind, he's a Saxon.
I pay no mind to any king that I've not seen. My Saxon right, my Saxon right.
Is it Grand Hall, is that Union Station?
We're infused on taxes.
Yeah, Union Station's across.
Yes, does he, does he accept, does he accept knights into his service?
He put a pledge fealty to Prince Ida.[1530.24]
No, I just wanna ride these guys down, actually.
I hope you all have enough distraction for me to come up behind.
Exactly, I was gonna say, so as you're keeping them, uh, as you're keeping them, uh, occupied, suddenly this horse comes vaulting across the irrigation ditch. And yes, uh, Sir Calus, you get a free attack on them, so it's an unopposed roll on your, uh, spear expertise.
So, um, honor, of course.
I feel like he really needs some like horse sound effects that go with it.
Yeah, I crit on my honor. I crit, um, so it goes to the nineteen now.
I think Jade's having out of, out of body experience.
That goes to the nineteen. That goes to nineteen, and I checked it.
You checked it, and so you get a plus twenty to your spear expertise.
Um, yeah, and this is gonna be my spear yet, and then, um, I'm gonna say this heroic speech saying. And nineteen.
Alright, that's a, that's a super duper crit, so you do double horse damage.
And I have.
You have a des dreer.
Yeah, which is.
So.
You need nine. Eight, D six, I need sixteen dice.
Yeah, good luck.
How many do you have?
No, we've got it, don't worry.
You got it, okay.
We've got a bunch.
Here, there's another one.
Count them out, man.
I don't count.
Slipped. Hold on, hold on. You don't even know how many you have.
I don't care, this is awful.
No, that's not.
Count them up, count them up.
You have to count them out.
Count them up.
You have to count.
You have to count them.
Oh, do I?
Yes.
I just get excited, I'll just keep my hands. Just roll a random die.
I'm telling you, please.
Oh yeah, I think you should use that.
Yeah, just drop them in like one at a time.
No, no, no.
Dice in your hand though.
Just make sure you have sixteen.
Don't drop it yet, though.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Wow, you had exactly sixteen dice.
Yes, very nice.
Damn, man, go buy a lotto ticket tonight.
Where do you think I'm going? I'm not really dancing, that's just an excuse. Oh god, um, so we get a ten, five, that's another ten, twenty, thirty, let's see, thirty, forty, forty-five, forty-eight, close to fifty, dang it, I was so hoping for fifty.
So, not quite Jade.
Not quite Jade, it's not a sixty-five.
Yeah.
Um, alright, yeah, so this knight comes, uh, leaping the irrigation ditch, shouting balls. And, uh.
That's the symbol of my land, is a ball of balls.
Full of my people.
And, uh, and just like literally rides down one of the, the, the lead sacks, and he just, he just collapses like a scarecrow under the clothes of his des dreer. And, uh, and the rest of them scatter, I'm gonna give them a roll here.
Sorry y'all, don't get to get combat.
Alright, so yeah, the Saxon bandits, uh, scatter at the sudden lightning-like appearance of Sir Calus.
What of your Saxon prince, good sirs? What of your Saxon prince?
So they go tearing off across the moors.
Your mother was a maiden.
That's, that's actually not insult.
What?
Yeah.
I know, that was the point. Just to make them even weirder in the head, like.
Like, what?
Exactly, just to mess with their heads even more. The dude says balls, and then he says our mother was a maiden, I don't know, to be mad at him or.
Thank you.
Exactly, exactly, mind games, that's how Calus works.
Mind games, baby.
Yes, and even though I'm really good.
Alright, so in due course, you all reach, uh, Joyous Guard, finding it tended only by the, uh, castellan, and no sign of Lancelot.
Well, let's speak with this.
Whatsoever.
Yes, let's speak with the castle.
He have not, he has not heard from Lancelot in some time. Uh, which is not unusual. Um, but he had had word of Lancelot's madness, and, uh, indeed, um, this formerly Saxon kingdom, which has mostly been staying, uh, under wraps due to Lancelot's presence, is now rising up in open rebellion.
So, uh, does he have any insight into where Lancelot might have gone in his madness?
Totally make a quick run, I'll be back, I'll probably.
Should we?
It's lame, I'll just come back, is that cool?
Yeah.
Later. See you guys.
Actually ran down the Saxons, you're just like, alright.
Do I need to do any more?
No, no, you're good, that was, that was a great way to go out.
I'm about to say.
That was a great way to go out.
So, I would say that in Lancelot's absence, we should defend his lands against the Saxon uprising.
Yeah, that sounds good.
We did, well.
I am a knight.
He is a fellow knight, he is a knight, he is a knight of a round table, well, no, he's not.
We did promise the royal couple.
Lancelot, he's not.
Oh, he did eventually.
Did he?
Yeah.
I think he kept running away.
Uh, he did, but they eventually got him.
Okay. One of the years I was gone.
Probably was, or else it just went without saying.
So he is a round table knight and entitled to all the glory and honor of one of such a station, and he should not have to suffer such impunity while he is, um, not of his current mind.
It's true, however, uh, we did, we did promise the royal couple that we would retrieve Lancelot.
Well, you, you in about five hundred thousand other knights.
Well, we're better than them.
Be honest here, guys, he probably got thrown out the window and his body hidden.
He's buried in a basement somewhere.
He's just, he's gone.
You know what, guys, I think we should go with the Field of Dreams concept, if we rebuild it, they will come.
Maybe the badge.
Yes.
Yeah, probably.
In all likelihood. So I believe that we should secure Lancelot's home so that he can return to it in good and mental health spirits.
Alright.
I'm, um, yeah, I like this.
Yeah, alright.
Seems like a good plan to me.
And we get to kill Saxons like we did in the good old days.
The good old days, god damn it.
I'm too young to know about that.
Technically, you're all too young to know about that, but you've heard stories.
I've heard stories.
Apparently your grandpa was really into it.
That's right, our grandpa.
I've heard lots of stories.
We have the same grandpa?
We're cousins.
Okay, sure.
Identical cousins.
No, I am way more attractive, excuse me.
That's, that is weird, you're all, you're all younger than, uh, the last time Saxons were a threat.
Yeah, so we're like, hmm.
Grandpa keeps talking.
Grandpa keeps talking about how horrible.
Tales, man. If you get started, he will not stop.
That's right, Grandpa Kinrain, he just keeps talking about him.
Are we kinrain's crickets?
Oh no, god forbid.
No, no, not.
I think we're too, a little too Christian for that.
I think we're a little too non-critting enough to be that.
If any, if anyone's Kinrain's grandson.
It's Calus.
Well, very good, so, uh, on that note then, you, you stay at Joyous Guard as the, uh, summer turns to fall, and winter comes upon you. Um, and so there it is left off, if you guys wanna do winter phase for shits and giggles, we can do that. Uh, but that is more or less the year five forty-seven.
Alright.
I wanna do winter phase.
Yeah, just for fun.
Yeah.
To experience it.
For funsies, as long as.
Yeah.
As long as everyone's doing okay, I mean, I'm totally into this, I could do this all night.
Alright, so D twenty for yearly event.
Fantastic.
Oh wait, I may not have those tables.
Oh.
Oh no.
Well, Susan, you got.
Oh wait, I can get them on my phone.
Susan, you got bad fortune, Randy, what did you roll? A two, okay, so we got good fortune.
Well.
Let me just pull them up real quick here.
It's hard to be this attractive.
And have, and have everything go your way.
It's hard to be this ridiculously good looking.
Yes. I, I hope it doesn't do anything that affects my app, that would be sad.
Well, you could be stricken.
I could. There's also some horrible things that could happen to me.
There are. You just have to roll a five off of your, uh, on your aging roll. Just imagine you roll a, a twelve on your aging roll, and then you roll four fives. You'd be, you'd go from a twenty to a sixteen.
My god.
Stop it, stop it.
And then.
Yeah.
And then Sir Calgarius sits around the campfire, he rolled four fives.
Oh god, no.
And he had to take away one of his notable features.
Now my radiant complexion.
Oh dear.
Oh, nope, that's not the right one.
And yes, that's how it goes.
And so on, and so forth.
And so it goes until the end of time. Once you turn thirty-five, you'll have to roll aging rolls every year.
Oh, so sad.
And if you don't have a glory bonus to offset it, you'll just keep declining and declining.
Pretty much so.
One day becoming like Sir Pace, dying in his old age, ugly and decrepit and kind of senile.
Alright, so who, who, who rolled, uh, who rolled what?
Rolled, Randy and I rolled two.
Okay.
Yes.
And Susan rolled a twenty.
Alright, well, let's do, uh.
Gotta get that out of the way, hang on.
Let's do good fortune for Calgarius first.
Alright, that is a fifteen.
Okay, so you are a knight, but you do not have your own land, right?
I do not.
Well.
Yeah, you do.
This makes sense, you're staying at Joyous Guard, um, there's a surfeit of staff there, so you get, you get on so well with five of them that they're gonna follow you when you leave, so you get five free servants.
Way.
Nice.
Yeah.
Lancelot might not be happy about that later.
And Randy, yeah, where did my musus go?
He was always with me.
Uh, eighteen for me.
Eighteen on the good fortune, now you do have your own land, so. Oh, this is nice, um, you've been granted a, uh, royal writ by the Duke of Lindsay. Uh, he's giving you ten libra, not a royal ready, a ducal writ, uh, he's giving you ten libra, so you can spruce up your lands a little bit.
Heck yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Fancy.
Mm-hmm, alright, and the bad fortune for Sir Clodore.
So I roll another twenty?
Uh-huh.
Ten.
And you do not have your own land, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have my house.
You have been stricken after a calamity.
No.
Shit, there is an app loss on this.
I know.
Roll a D, roll a D six, roll a D six, no, no, this is, this is apart from an aging roll, this is, there's a potential app loss on the stricken.
Yeah, no, Dave told me about that.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, so yeah, roll that, uh, roll a D six.
This is all your fault, Dave. Three?
You're one away from minus three app.
Oh god, that'd be horrible.
Minus two app.
Seventeen.
It's actually minus five app. Uh, no, this says reroll a fitting trait. So a calamity has struck you, and, and so you've suffered a change of personality somehow, what do you think? You're merciful perhaps, after seeing those starving villagers, maybe you get a little more hard-hearted?
Maybe that's why I got stricken, I gave them all my food and I started starving.
You could reroll your generous, like in the future I shouldn't be so generous?
Okay, let's reroll my generous, it actually might get better, so let's see what.
So three D six is what you roll.
Okay. Oh yeah, now it's a twelve. That was totally the right choice.
So you've actually gotten more generous?
Yes.
You're like, I don't mind that I gave away all my food.
Yeah, no, now it's flip-flopped, so it was like apparently just the right choice.
Okay, well, there you go.
That's how he feels about it, he's like, I feel so awful, but those poor people, they felt so much worse, and I've saved them from that a little bit.
Nice. Okay, so now you're all gonna roll your experience checks, D twenty, if you roll over your existing number, it goes up by one.
So like, how much do you wanna fail it?
So what, what, oh, oh, for our checks, okay, super.
So that's traits, passions, and skills.
Okay, so what do you do if both your generous and your selfish are checked?
You roll both, and it might cancel each other out.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so lazy increases.
Okay, so I, I fail my generous.
I got my own land now, I don't need to work. So if you fail it, it goes up, is that, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so it goes up by one, is that right?
That's right, and then the, the corresponding trait goes down by one.
Okay, well now my generous is thirteen.
Nice.
Generous does not increase.
This is a big change. Now I'm a total douche, alright.
Just.
I'm just insufferable, I'm sure, okay.
I did not succeed at one passion roll this game.
I can't stop talking about how generous I was.
Exactly, yeah, I love that you have all these positive traits and you just use it to fuel your selfishness.
Well, you know what, when you're selfish as I was anyway.
Our glory floor.
My proud is still ten, we'll see how that goes.
Disappeared, sir.
Nope, it, uh, I rolled a ten, alright, so I did not increase my awareness.
Oh, I made my arbitrary.
And that's everything.
Alright.
Of course, I made him merciful.
So when I checked my honor, was I supposed to also increase that, that moment?
No.
Only if you critted it.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I failed my valorous, alright. So I increased it by one?
One, yeah.
I have intrigue.
What's your valorous though?
Twelve.
Of course I rolled one to increase my intrigue, which is three.
Yeah, that's, oh, so classic, that always happens, yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
Alright, well, I think that's all for me.
Okay, so everyone ages up a year, of course, you're all still spring chickens, so.
We're all twenty-two now.
But your squires also age up a year, so they are now fifteen.
Squires, so young.
So young to.
So very young.
Oh, I've got so many more rolls to do, alright, um.
Oh, he saw some checks.
Yeah, no, I made a lot of good things happen.
Humble brag.
Humble brag.
Guys, slow down, I'm not done rolling all my checks yet.
It's just taking so long.
I'm sorry, it's taking me so long to roll all my checks.
I was just so awesome last session.
And so the skills go up by one as well?
Yes, it's just what?
I'm more romantic now, fantastic. If anything went up, at least it's that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, economics, you're all taken care of because you're staying, uh, on Lancelot's largess.
That's right.
So how old is our spire now, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah. Uh, so you're all maintained at ordinary level.
What?
Now FYI, like Randy, if you were back on your land, which is poor.
What is the?
You would be having negative modifiers to horse and child survival.
What did we get? Money?
We got no money.
You're, you're sustained, basically.
Fantastic.
At ordinary level.
We maintain.
Uh, no chance for marriage, presumably, uh, Sir Calus leaves to go back south so he can marry Lady Elizabeth.
Yeah, he's like, sorry guys, I've got.
Peace out. Fucking peace, nobody's gonna bother me on the road.
Stay away from the knight of the balls.
That's, that's how it goes.
That's how it goes. Uh, nobody's married, so there's no childbirth possibilities. And although I guess you could all do chase lustful rolls if you wanna like have a roll in the hay with the local laundry women or whatever.
Alright.
There are ladies at this castle.
Fail my chase, make my lustful.
Oh my god, I failed my chase.
Roll your lustful.
How did that happen?
It happened.
And I succeeded on lustful.
And I failed my lustful.
Okay, well, two of you at least, uh, find a way to while away the, uh, the winter. So both of you give me D twenty rolls.
Ten.
Seven.
Uh, neither one of you produce any children.
Yep, just a lot of fun.
Just a lot of fun.
That's the way it should be.
I guess those ladies knew what they were doing.
That's right.
Alright, let's see what your, uh, family's up to this winter.
D six roll, guys. You want a higher than a three.
How about a one?
One is nothing.
Thanks, Dave.
That's all I got.
I got, I got a two, which is also nothing.
Alright, everyone's keeping a low profile, very good.
Except for, you know, winning things and being perfectly attractive.
Yeah. Alright, so now you're going to do training and practice, which means you can, uh, change a trait a- attribute or passion by one point. Or you can train, you can distribute one D six plus one skill points among skills under fifteen, or add one point to a skill that is, uh, between fifteen and twenty.
Alright, adding six points to read Latin.
So add a D six to something?
D six plus one, you can add it all into one, as long as it doesn't go above fifteen, or you can, you know, spread it out a little bit.
Okay, so your options are.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm debating between like trying to get that size point back.
Well, yeah, the D six plus one's usually a good choice for young knights because your skills are pretty low, but, but you did lose a point of size.
So Randy, your options are, put one point into one of your statistics, put one point into one of your personality traits, put one point into one of your passions, put one point into one of your skills that is fifteen or more, or roll a D six, add one to it, ending, and add that number of points into skills that are less than fifteen.
I got a six, so seven, so I get seven skill points I can use?
I need to add seven or six points.
Well.
My intrigue is now nine.
Maybe I'm gonna have to put some into some more quarterly things.
I don't know.
Hey, I, I just blew it all on read Latin.
Hey, that's fair.
You, you found a library.
Yeah.
The castle.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, just lurid Latin poetry.
Yeah, you found a library of smutty Roman poetry.
Perfect.
Well, I'm in for the winter.
This is wonderful.
Actually, no, I'm gonna change that to my.